Regularly scheduled city council meeting to order this Tuesday, December 1st. And I convened this meeting with my mask on. And I do that is just a reminder to everyone, although I don't need to have it on right now. It's important for us to remember that when we're out and we should have a mask on, just do it. It's pretty painless and hopefully we can get past this. So this evening, our invocation will be led by Police Chaplain Terrence Brown. Chaplain Brown, welcome. We're so happy to see you again and we hope your Thanksgiving was a blessed one. I'm sure it was. And we'll ask for your kind words. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let us pray. Holy Father, as always, we come before you tonight in the spirit of praise and Thanksgiving, giving you thanks for this city, this community, this council, these dedicated team of workers, whether paid or volunteer, that have weathered the storms of adversity and get through it all and still standing, still believing, still determined, and still hopeful. So on tonight, I am requesting a special blessing on this city council meeting and all its participants, that this will not only be a time for city business, but a time of renewing of strength, faith, joy, courage, and focus, believing with all certainty that brighter days are truly ahead. So in your glorious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chaplain Brown. We always appreciate your words and we'll look forward to seeing you again in the future.
Likewise. Thank you, sir.
So at this time, I want to call on Councilmember Spicer to lead us in the pledge. And if you'd all please rise and all put a flag up here for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you for that. I'll now call on the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Sure. Excuse me. Councilmembers Crudgington.
Here.
Chevlin.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Blackburn.
Here.
And Mayor Adams.
Here. Thank you. This evening's going to be a little different. We're going to be moving some things around based on some other folks joining our meeting.
Mayor Adams, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we skipped over the report of closed session.
Oh, yes. Mr. Steele, can you give us a report of closed session, please?
Thank you, Mr. Adams, members of the council. Good evening. Prior to the meeting this evening, the council met in closed session regarding the three items on the posted agenda. All the council members were present. It took reports from staff and took no reportable action on any item.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving back to our agenda, this evening, our student liaison is not with us, so we will not have that. But we will move forward with an item. It's a presentation from the LA County. Oh, looks like we have a special guest.
Ho, ho, ho! Merry Christmas, Tom, and City Council. How is everyone here?
Good.
How are you?
Real good, Santa. How are you?
Doing well.
Oh, I'm doing great. I'm so good. I'm sorry to zoom bomb you, but are I disrupting anything? Ho, 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 ho.
Ho, 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 Santa.
You're welcome, Santa.
How are you, City Council? How is everything?
Everybody's well.
Yeah.
Everybody's well. That's great. Ho, 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 ho. Well, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I apologize for zoom bombing, Mr. Mayor and City Council, but since I'm here, can I take a moment to share with all of you and the good people of Monrovia about my upcoming visit to this beautiful town? Ho, 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 ho.
Please do.
Should be all right?
Please do.
All right. Whenever year, as I prepare for the holiday, I look forward to to see this charming town. I love seeing all the families sitting outside waving to me as I drive by. Ho, ho, ho. It really is what the holiday is all about. Ho, 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 ho. So I have one of my Monrovia's finest and also my very good friend, Sergeant Doncic, here to share the details. Ho, ho, ho.
Thank you, Santa. Good evening, Mayor Adams.
No, there's no problem.
Good. Mayor Adams, council members, and everybody else watching, good evening. And I'm just going to share a little bit of information about this year's Santa tour, which we're all looking forward to very much. So it will be starting next week, Monday night, all week, from December 7th to 11th. And things are going to be a little bit different this year just because of necessity. So let's go over it a little bit. So normally, we'd be having our holiday parade, which unfortunately, we cannot this year. So the theme that the city has gone with is to bring the parade to everybody else in the city. And we're going to do that through changing up the Santa tour a little bit, the way things are going to be done. So we invite everyone here to take out chairs, blankets, everyone in the city, your holiday suites, gather with the family, and enjoy the mobile Santa tour parade this year. So each evening, the tour will begin at about 5:00 PM, and we'll be going through about 9:00 PM. We are going to have some special guests with familiar faces writing in our sleigh this year, some local dignitaries will be joining us. They will be there in spirit with everybody, able to share their smiles and holiday cheer with everyone in the city. And so we'll just go over what the parade routes are going to look like on each night so everybody can plan accordingly. The first night on Monday, December 7th, we'll be doing all of the city streets south of Huntington Drive, west of Myrtle, and north of all the southern city boundaries. This includes Do Ray Circle, right there inside that red box. On Tuesday evening, the 8th, we will be up in the northeast section of the city, will be north of Foothill and east of Myrtle. On Wednesday, December 9th, we'll be doing the streets west of Myrtle between Foothill and Huntington Drive. On Thursday, December 10th, we will be doing the city streets east of Myrtle between Foothill and Doherty Road. And then finally, we'll be wrapping up on Friday evening, December 11th, on all streets north of Foothill and west of Myrtle. The City of Monrovia Santa Tracker will be going live very soon. The tour link, I'm sorry, the Santa Tour, Santa Tracker link will be put on the city's Santa tour website. You can all click in and follow Santa on GPS so you can see how close he is to approaching your address if you want to come out and see him. The little icon down there, the Santa hat that's currently centered on the station will be what everybody will follow to see where he is. And that will wrap up the very brief Santa tour information session. Again, everybody, please come out, say hello to Santa, and enjoy the stay-at-home parade Santa tour this year. Thank you, everybody, for listening.
Fantastic. Any questions from the council?
Just thank you, Santa.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Santa.
I look forward to seeing you all on the Santa tour, but with that, I must go. I have a very, very busy schedule to keep. Ho, ho, ho.
Ho, ho, ho.
Merry Christmas to one and all. I love all of you Monroviaans. Bye-bye for now.
Bye, Santa.
Bye.
Santa, I have to tell you that normally, when you come visit us, you hand out candy canes. And we're kind of disappointed that you're not doing that this year.
Well, I'm going to try my best, though. You never know.
Okay.
Just remember, Mr. Mayor, Santa is always watching.
All right.
Merry Christmas, all.
Thank you all for, uh, thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate it very much. Okay, we've been asked to move an item up from RCC 1, and it's a report from the Los Angeles County Tax Assessor, Jeff Prang. And Jeff is here to give us an update on what's going on at the assessor's office, and maybe more importantly, how that impacts Monrovia and what changes have been made.
We appreciate it very much. Okay, we've been asked to move an item up from RCC 1, and it's a report from the Los Angeles County Tax.
There's obviously a slight delay, so we're just going to let them catch up as we've let them into the meeting.
Okay.
And I think that was probably enough. And Mr. Prang and Ms. Chambers, if you just be sure to mute your streams. Thank you.
Okay. Assessor Prang, welcomes, and we appreciate you coming to join us this evening so very much. We're looking forward to your update.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to be here. Are you, are you ready for me to go?
Yes, sir. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here with you virtually in the city of Monrovia, one of the 88 cities that I have the privilege of representing. And I want to thank them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Clerk and City Manager for helping set up this meeting and give me an opportunity to share a little bit about the assessor's office and some of the programs and services that we provide to serve the people of Monrovia. I always like to begin my remarks by reminding everybody what I do, and as importantly, what I do not do. What I do not do is collect taxes. I'm often mistakenly called the tax assessor. However, there is no such thing in the state of California. There's another guy who's got a really intuitive title who collects the taxes. He's called the tax collector. So the assessor assesses and the tax collector collects. So many of you may not know that I administer a department of nearly 1,400 employees in six locations throughout the county. About half the employees are real estate appraisers. We have a budget of about $200 million, and we're the largest local assessment agency in the United States. I'm responsible for the valuation over 2.5 million real property parcels and business assessments, which are valued annually at $1.7 trillion. And the assessor in many ways is the fiscal engine for local government and schools. While I'm not a revenue-er per se, the property values that my office determines are used to calculate property taxes, which in turn provide revenue for local government and public schools, including the city of Monrovia. My office does, however, have a symbiotic relationship with a couple of other departments that each have a piece of the property tax administrative system, primarily the auditor controller and the treasurer tax collector. And the other way it works is my office gets a copy of a deed from the registrar, or we get building permits from cities like Monrovia. We then complete the assessment of value. The auditor controller is the one who tells you how much you owe, and the treasurer tax collector mails the bill and collects the payments. And this year, the property tax revenues that begin with the work of my office will provide over $17 billion in vital public services for local government. And as you can imagine, that's deet now more than ever because sales, revenue from sales taxes, tourism, and in some cases even parking fines have declined because of COVID. My primary responsibility, the main function, if you will, of the assessor is the production of what we call the annual assessment roll, which is essentially the inventory of all taxable property in the county. All revenues generated through property taxes are allocated to local government, city services, county services, school districts, and special districts. It's important that our valuation that we apply be fair and equitable for all taxpayers, but it's also critical that the assessment roll be as thorough and complete as possible. Otherwise, dollars that should go to vital public services are left on the table. This assessment roll also serves as an important planning document for local government as you're preparing your local budgets in anticipation of property tax revenue. It also serves as an important economic indicator for providing some insight as to the health of the real estate market. This year was particularly challenging in preparing the assessment roll due to COVID-19. It changed the way that we normally conduct business. But I can report that the 2020 assessment roll came in at $1.77 trillion, meaning that property values in the county, countywide, increased almost 6% for the fiscal year ending June 30th, although that does not take into consideration some of the impacts of COVID-19. The biggest thing contributing to the assessment roll is the buying and selling of property, as well as new construction, as well as the annual cost of living adjustment that Proposition 13 allows. That's capped at 2%. But as I said, we need to emphasize that these optimistic numbers that we have don't reflect the impacts on the market due to COVID. We're anticipating a significant impact, particularly on commercial industrial properties, as well as a dramatic increase in the number of assessment appeals and applications for a decline in value, which will reflect any type of negative impact. Up until COVID, though, 2020 represented the 10th consecutive year of growth in property values of the county. And this next year, we're expecting that that will change. Hospitality industry, restaurants, and retail properties in particular are expected to decline in value. That being said, the city of Monrovia has sustained a consecutive assessed value growth of almost 5% or greater over the last five years. In the current assessment roll, Monrovia experienced one of the highest percentages of growth in the county, coming in at almost 7.5%, with an assessed value of all property at over $6 billion, spread out over 10,000 parcels, which includes about 7,700 single-family homes, 1,600 rental properties, and just over 1,000 commercial industrial parcels. If you're interested in another area or specific city in the county, a digital copy of my annual report with city-by-city breakdowns is available on my website, which is assessor.lacounty.gov. There has been an unusual and unanticipated growth in the value of median sales prices for single-family homes in LA County. It's steadily increased over the course of the pandemic. In September, the median sales price was $720,000 compared to $638,000 back in March. Right now, the median sales price in Monrovia is a little bit higher than the county average. It's $760,000. But it's also important to understand that even though this sales price has increased, there's a few things contributing to that. One is the sales volume has plummeted almost 50% year-over-year in the county. This increase in the median sales price also suggests that the real estate market is top-heavy with a small amount of high-priced homes being bought and sold. This also correlates with other data suggesting that the economic impact is being felt unequally throughout the county. On another topic, my office also administers additional programs that allow property owners to save money on their property taxes. And one of the ones I want to emphasize to you tonight is the homeowners exemption, which is the most basic program that's easily available to anyone who owns their home and lives in that home. The homeowners exemption allows me to reduce the taxable value of a home by $7,000, which translates into about $70 annual savings, which can accumulate over the life of your home. However, every year, about $30 million in tax savings go unclaimed in the county because people don't apply for this exemption. We estimate that about 30% of qualified residents in the city of Monrovia do not take advantage of this tax savings program, and it's primarily because they simply don't know about it. So I always like to, when I speak to cities, I always like to recommend that your public information office, through your newsletters, your website, your social media, promote the homeowners exemption and help those residents, a number of them who may be struggling right now, save a little, save some money on their property taxes. And you can also apply online through my website, again, assessor.lacounty.gov. The last thing I wanted to mention deals with public policy, a matter that was decided on the November ballot. Proposition 19 was approved by the voters. This measure will allow a homeowner, any homeowner who's 55 or older, or disabled, or somebody who is a victim of a natural disaster such as the recent fires, to transfer their property tax base them when they sell their home and purchase a new one. The amendment will also prevent those who inherit family properties from keeping your parents, or in some cases, your grandparents' low property tax base unless you live in the home as your primary residence, and then the, you can only transfer $1 million in value. This measure will allow eligible homeowners to transfer their tax base anywhere in the state and allow the assessment, the lower assessment, to be transferred to a more expensive home. And you could transfer it up to three times throughout your lifetime. The current effective date of this measure is April 1st, 2021. The other half of Prop 19, which changes the rules between inheritance between parents and children, right now, you can inherit your parents' property, whatever its value, and you can inherit an additional $1 million in additional property. But Prop 19 abolishes most of these transfers, limiting the inherited property to the primary residence and then capping the value that can be inherited. But candidly, the relative, despite the relative merits of Prop 19, this was a measure that was rushed on the ballot, and we've identified numerous drafting errors that are going to need to be fixed before I and the other 57 assessors statewide can administer it properly. So just in conclusion, a couple of quick notes. One, to avoid confusion when dealing with the property tax system. One, if a property owner dies, it's important to notify the assessor with 150 days. If you don't, you could be fined, but failure to do so can complicate inheritance and planning. Even if the property's in a trust, you still need to file that notification. And secondly, talk about trusts. A lot of people are using trusts now for inheritance and estate planning purposes, but these are precision instruments that get people in a lot of trouble. Even a minor deviation from the rules could result in a tax increase. I urge you to check out my website. There's a flyer on there that talks about trusts, that tells you how to avoid some common mistakes and pitfalls that could end up in a reassessment. But that's pretty much my update as your LA County Assessor. I appreciate the opportunity to share this information with the good people in the city of Monrovia, and I want to reiterate that I'm here to collaborate with you and the city to assist all of our mutual constituents, and I appreciate Mayor Adams, the hospitality that you, the entire city council, have extended me, and I wish you and the entire city a wonderful holiday season.
Well, we appreciate that, Assessor Prang. Is there any estimate on how much additional revenue LA County will get due to the passage of Prop 19?
So that's going to, there is likely to be more revenue, but as I mentioned, the implementation is going to be very, very difficult. We're going to need a lot of, it's probably a couple of years before we start seeing money because fixing some of the drafting errors will probably slow our implementation down. But we do believe on the, on the inheritance side, that, I don't have a number about what type of revenue, but we're expecting a significant more, a lot more revenue to stay with the county that previously was benefited by the heirs of family homes. Because you cannot inherit as much value from the family as you did previously, that's going to increase the amount of reassessable property and the revenues that will accompany it. Also, on the other side is that we anticipate, because people can have a portable base share value, can move up to three times if you qualify, that may result in more turnover in property, which as property turns over and is reassessed, valuable property goes up in property taxes that accompany it and will go up as well. Probably figuring the next few years, we'll start seeing some changes in revenue. I wish I could give you a more specific answer at this point, but I don't have them.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please do.
You were talking about, since there are several corrections that need to be made to the legislation, can you tell us then, when exactly does the measure, will it be enforceable, or when will it go into effect?
So the, those are some of the, so part of, the part that allows you to transfer your property tax base to a new home goes into effect on April 1st. The inheritance of your family's property goes into effect February 1st. Now, there's some things that we, that we simply don't know. We don't know whether the grandparent or grandchild exclusion continues. We don't know if multiple children can inherit property, or one child can inherit it, or can there be a sequence of different children inheriting the property. There's a lot of questions that the measure doesn't answer. So we're going to be seeking guidance from the Board of Equilization and from the legislature. It could be that there's going to need to be legislative action to clarify some of these points. It could be that there needs to be another ballot measure if the provision doesn't allow legislative fixes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from my colleagues for Assessor Prang? Well, we most certainly appreciate the update, and we appreciate what you do with your service for the entire county. And if there's anything we can ever do to help you, don't hesitate to call.
I appreciate that, Mayor. We'd be grateful of your assistance in reaching out to your, the 30% of your homeowner residents who don't take advantage of that tax savings plan, homeowners exemption.
We will do that, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move back to our consent calendar, and I will entertain a motion on that.
I'll move. Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any objection? See, Alice, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Crudgington.
Yes.
Chevlin.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Blackburn.
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you. We'll now move to public input, and I know the city clerk has received several emails for different items, and unfortunately, we don't get to hear everyone as we normally would, but Alice, if you could read those, we'd appreciate it.
Sure, Mayor Adams. And just to be clear, do you want me to read everything for all the items at this time, or just the regular public input and then follow up with the other?
Probably just the public input for now.
Perfect. Perfect. All right. So we're going to start with a report from the Chamber of Commerce. "Good Evening. The Chamber continues to advocate for a business community. Last week, I spoke during public comment at the LA County Supervisors Meeting opposing the new restrictions. We continue to support small business and promote small business. Season shop Monrovia first. Thank you to City Manager Dylan for attending the networking breakfast this morning. It was a great surprise, and our attendees enjoyed the conversation. Bill continues to bring in new members and ended the month with bringing in Chick-fil-A. Thank you to Mayor Tom for the virtual community prayer breakfast. Save the date, January 29, 2021, for the membership and awards event. #MonroviaStrong." Comes from Sari Canalis. And our other item of public input is from Phil Cannon. "This is a postmortem perspective of Monrovia's ill-fated involvement with Proposition 20. The appointment of an ad hoc diversity committee was a good move. There was a diversity deficit when the council unanimously endorsed an initiative that was 62% rejected. If Monrovia goes off on another tangent, maybe the committee can get in the way and block another boondoggle. A correction on the consultant compensation. The Take Back Our Community Coalition collected $54,000 from 36 cities. Monrovia signed two $25,000 contracts. I thought those were separate payments, but they were not. The Take Back Our Community money financed the contract, so my inflated estimate was a double, was about double the correct amount. If the consultant were still on the payroll, it would be interesting to hear his excuse why the prop flopped. As a supporter of California's criminal justice reforms, it was my duty to devise a devastating dialect to discredit and defeat the divisive development without compensation. Not to gloat, I will end on that note." And that is all of the public comment I received before the deadline.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions for the city clerk? We'll now move on to our public hearings, and we have, I think, three public hearings this evening. So we'll move on to PH 1 is the appeal of a planning commission decision, and Teresa Santalena, the associate planner, will give us the staff report. Teresa, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Adams, and good evening to you, council members. And we'll just be pulling up the PowerPoint here. Technical difficulties. Okay, so to reiterate, this first item on the agenda for public hearings this evening is an appeal of a planning commission approval of two variances for a raised deck to encroach into the required rear and side yard setbacks at 946 Crescent Drive. To give you a little bit of background on this project, in late May of this year, community development staff received a complaint from the resident at 951 Hillcrest Boulevard, Mr. Abakian, and he alerted city staff to unpermitted construction in the backyard of his neighbor's property at 946 Crescent Drive. That day, a building inspector was dispatched to the site, and he learned that the property owner had undertaken a project to build an outdoor deck next to his detached office space. At that time, the building inspector issued a stop-work order and directed the property owner, Mr. Butlak, to work with Planning and Building Division staff to secure to work with Planning and Building Division staff to secure zoning permissions and building permits for the deck. Throughout the summer, Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement staff worked with Mr. Butluk. Planning and Building Division staff visited the subject property to observe the conditions on the site. Based on the location and the height of the unpermitted deck, Planning Division staff advised the property owner that it could not be approved administratively and could only be approved in its current location by the Planning Commission through a variance process. During that time, staff also regularly communicated with Mr. Avakian to explain the code enforcement process and try to understand his concerns and the impacts he was feeling on his property. Mr. Butluk decided to pursue two variances in order to retain zoning approval for the deck. One variance to encroach into the required rear yard setback and another to encroach into the required side yard setback. In August, the Community Development Director, on behalf of the Development Review Committee, conducted an advisory review of the project, and he forwarded the application to the Planning Commission with a recommendation of approval, subject to conditions to address privacy impacts. In October, the Planning Commission approved the variance request based on the findings related to the shape and topography of the property. After that Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Avakian appealed their approval. The subject property is located on the south side of Crescent Drive at the terminus of the cul-de-sac. It shares its west property line with a house up in the Terrace View Estates, and it shares its south property line with two residential properties on West Hillcrest Boulevard. The appellant lives in the house directly to the south of the subject property, outlined in kind of yellowish-orange there. The property is located in the residential low-density zone, but it's in a neighborhood that has zoning that's split between RL, residential low, and RF, which is our residential foothill zone designation. In Monrovia, parcels that have relatively steep slopes or are environmentally sensitive are generally zoned RF, and they're developed with a maximum density of one dwelling unit per acre of land. The majority of RL parcels, on the other hand, tend to be smaller in size and are relatively flat. However, the city's hillside topography does not abruptly end where the zoning lines are put in place, and parcels in this type of neighborhood generally have characteristics of both zone designations. The property at 946 Crescent Drive is an example of one of those parcels, which makes it a little more challenged to develop. The RL standards do allow for hillside development, and city staff refers to the hillside development standards in order to take a conservative approach in guiding these hillside projects. The hillside development standards specifically address the importance of conservation of topographical features, preservation of native vegetation to reduce areas of grading on the slopes, preservation of mature trees, particularly oak trees, and mitigation of potential impacts to view corridors that would be caused by new construction. The parcels in this area slope from north to south. The subject parcel sits lower than the other homes on Crescent Drive and on Terrace View Drive, but it's situated higher than the neighboring properties to the south on Hillcrest Boulevard. The lower image on your screen shows the subject property situated above the appellant's property. Based on the information gathered during the site inspection, Planning Division staff determined that the deck does not meet either the side or the rear yard setback requirements. The RL standards require that decks that are more than one foot off of the ground must maintain the same setbacks as the primary building. If this parcel was flat and the deck did not exceed the height of one foot over the existing grade, the required setback would be three feet for both the side and the rear setbacks, and no variance would be needed. However, the deck is almost eight feet tall at its tallest point. Because of that height, main building second-story setback requirements apply, which are larger setback requirements than main building first-story setbacks. The second-story setback requirement is 12 feet for the side yard and 20% of the lot depth plus 10 feet for the rear yard, which equates to 40 feet 6 inches in this case. However, the deck is only set at 3 feet 6 inches from the side property line and 13 feet 6 inches from the rear property line, necessitating the two variances. State law sets forth specific findings that must be made in order to approve variance requests. Those findings must substantiate that there are special circumstances applicable to the property related to the size, shape, topography, location, or configuration that would make strict application of the zoning ordinance a deprivation of privileges that are enjoyed by other property owners in the same zone. Additionally, granting a variance shall not be a grant of special privileges. In considering the variance requests, the commission evaluated many aspects of the project, including methods used to determine the shape of the parcel and the height of the deck, the planning and building division processes required to issue permits for the deck, and whether the process is different when an applicant is retroactively seeking approval after a structure has been built. The commission specifically considered whether special circumstances of the parcel exist to meet the criteria required within the variance findings. One of the special circumstances considered was the irregular lot shape. The zoning ordinance assumes parcels are rectangular. However, the subject parcel has five property lines and is roughly diamond-shaped with one clipped point. The irregular shape of the parcel gives this lot greater depth than the surrounding parcels. Since the RL standards are taking the setback requirements as a percentage of lot depth, the greater depth of the subject parcel imposes a larger rear yard setback requirement than that found on the surrounding parcels. Another consideration of the commission was the topography of the lot. The parcel is situated on a slope. While the house, garage, and pool have been constructed on level pad area, we can see from these photos that the lot has a steep slope in the backyard, making much of the backyard area unusable for recreation space. Mr. Butluk constructed his deck approximately halfway down the slope and cantilevered it over the slope rather than grading the area to create more level pad area. The deck is level with the grade of the slope on the north side, but is more than seven feet off the ground at its highest point on the south side. The hillside development standards do allow for a deck to be cantilevered over a slope, but only if a line of site analysis indicates that there are no visual impacts or appropriate mitigation measures are put in place to reduce visual impacts. Finally, the Planning Commission also considered neighborhood context and impact the deck has on surrounding neighbors. Prior to the Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Avakian, the neighbor to the south, submitted an email containing these two images to illustrate how his property is affected by the deck. These images were included in the staff report and presentation to the Planning Commission. Mr. Avakian's email stated that his concerns primarily involve noise coming off the subject property and loss of privacy in his backyard and bedroom. Though it is a concern, noise is a separate matter than the variances. Title IX of the municipal code contains the city's noise ordinance and is used to resolve noise conflicts. Noise nuisances are measured from the property lines and enforced by the police department. All residential property owners within the city are required to comply with the noise regulation regardless of where a structure is placed on the lot. Approval of the deck, however, does require an analysis of visual impacts on surrounding properties. In conducting their review, the Planning Commission noticed that while the neighbors to the east and west have little to no visual impact from the deck, the deck sits higher than the properties to the south. To mitigate these impacts, staff suggested a condition of approval requiring new landscaping along the south property line to create additional screening. Staff also advised the commission that they could require a covenant be recorded against the property so that notice regarding the landscape screening would be disclosed to any future buyer should there be a sale of the property. With these conditions, the Planning Commission felt that the required findings could be met, and they approved the two variances with a three-to-one vote. On October 26, Mr. Avakian submitted an appeal to the Planning Commission's decision. In his appeal letter, Mr. Avakian states that he feels his objection was not given fair consideration and that landscape screening will not be enough to address his concerns related to noise and privacy. After submitting his appeal, Mr. Avakian allowed staff to visit the backyard of his property and take photos, and he also submitted additional pictures to demonstrate his concerns. Mr. Avakian's backyard does slope upward towards Mr. Butluk's property and has short retaining walls that create two different level areas in the backyard. The deck is visible from Mr. Avakian's backyard and his bedroom. Though Mr. Avakian's appeal conveys the distress that was caused by the construction of this deck, staff believes that special circumstances of the parcel continue to support the findings for approval of the variances. The property is irregular in shape and has steep slopes, which constrains development. Additionally, conditions of approval have been applied to plant additional landscaping and to record that covenant, requiring maintenance of the landscaping. Finally, decks are specifically authorized in the RL development standards and cantilevered decks are permitted under the hillside development standards, provided that visual impacts can be mitigated. It's important to note that Mr. Butluk still has to require, is still required to produce structural plans to the Building Division for plan check and permit issuance. However, a building permit cannot be issued unless the variances are approved. Staff has outlined the following three options for the City Council's consideration. The first would be to affirm the findings of approval, deny the appeal, and uphold the decision of the Planning Commission. The second would also affirm the approval, deny the appeal, and uphold the decision of the Planning Commission, but with additional conditions added to further mitigate sightline and privacy impacts. However, if the council decides that the findings cannot be made, they can direct staff to continue the public hearing to the council meeting of December 15th and thereby direct staff to provide findings for denial of the variances, which would require the property owner remove his raised deck that was constructed without permits. Staff is recommending that the council uphold the decision of the Planning Commission and approve the variances to allow the raised deck that was constructed within the rear and side yard setbacks. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Teresa. Any questions of staff?
I have a question. The trees or the landscaping improvements, I assume that those would be mature specimens that would be required. Nothing, nothing that would take years or whatever to grow, but they'd be mature specimens to provide the greatest blocking or...
Yes, the, Mr. Butluk has been directed to work with the Planning Division for appropriate screening. Above and beyond looking for full landscaping, city staff is also looking to make sure that the plantings are appropriate for the hillside area. And we have sent Mr. Butluk an approved list of plantings from, from some of the specific plans up in the hillside area, which would include appropriate types of landscaping.
Is the deck completed now, just without permits?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you, Teresa. Great report.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing and ask the city clerk if we have any comments or speakers for this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a few people in our waiting room. The, the appellant and also the original applicant, the property owner. So, I've admitted the appellant, hoping he can catch up with the slight lag between streaming and, and our program. And then I'll just mention that once we hear from the appellant and the applicant, I have one written comment that was submitted. So, at this time, Mr. Avakian, you are set to speak.
Hello?
Yes, welcome.
Yeah. I'd rather give my nephew to speak instead of me. I'm just letting him to speak. Tigran Avakian.
Sorry, give me one more minute. I've got, I'm admitting Tigran. He is admitted. So, we've just gotta wait for his audio. Sorry for that delay. Thanks for your patience. Tigran, are you, are you connected now? Okay.
Good evening. Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
It wouldn't let me. I can't start my video.
Right, we're just, we're taking voice comments. But you're, you're ready to, you're in the meeting and ready to provide the comments.
Sure, so, so my, since I'm on the record, I believe, right?
Yes.
So, I'm Tigran Avakian, nephew of Malcolm Avakian. I live on and off on the same property, which is neighboring to the property, which is, you know, the address 946 Crescent Drive. I'm also part of the trust of my dad's and my uncle's property. So, I have a vested interest in this decision. This is in regards to the appeal. We are concerned about the direction of this hearings. To start with, online, there is a Resolution Number 20278, which is already written up, as if this meeting has already happened, and with a clear decision typed up. If anything else, it shows intent and a lack of objectivity in this hearing. So, I'm strongly concerned about how this proceeding is being processed. On the substance of the matter, this is appealed towards the variances accepted by the Planning Division, variance V 2020 0001 and V 2020 0002. It's in violation of Monrovia Municipal Code 17.52.110, Section A 2C, which clearly says, states that minor exceptions to the code. So, first of all, it is established that the building, the construction built on, on, you know, by our neighbor was done without first necessary permit, in complete disregard to the numerous and multiple objections by, by my uncle and my father. We had personal objections, we passed it on, we filed petitions with the Planning Division, et cetera. It took them three months to actually react to those objections, but by which time the construction was completed. So, the actual building is constructed in violation of city codes, right? Up in which, up in which our neighbor, Mr. Butluk, sorry, filed variances which were readily accepted. In the hearing that happened in October, I think it was 14, I wasn't present in that hearing. However, based on, on feedback from my uncle, he wasn't given a fair chance to provide his perspective. But to the substance, again, this is something that I wasn't part of, but to the substance, variances were accepted in, in our view unlawfully because they contradict Monrovia's municipal codes to begin with. Those are 17.52.110, which clearly states that minor exceptions can be permitted within the limits of 20% maximum reduction of the setback, right? The setback should be 40, I think, six feet. Currently, it stands at 13 feet. It's way over 20%, right? There is another code, again, Monrovia Municipal Code 17.52.200, which says committee can make a decision on those exceptions if the proposed location of the use and the conditions under which it will be operated, I assume, the building or maintained will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injures to properties or improvements in the vicinity. That construction materially diminishes the value of the property, which are eventually going to... which I eventually going to inherit, which I have strong objection again. So this is a material damage to my future inheritance. That's first. Secondly, well, that's further on, right? But firstly, it's a huge health concern for my uncle. He's provided full descriptions, photography, and everything else that shows that the deck is located directly in front of his bedroom window. It deprives him of the privacy. My uncle Malcolm suffers for many years from deep depression and takes various medications. He needs proper rest. He shouldn't be put in the stressful situations. And again, all these considerations were completely dismissed, and if I read the readily typed up decision on the hearing that's happened already, apparently, it pays a lot of attention to the preservation of the oak tree, to the unfortunate circumstances of the geometry of the property of our neighbor, that because of he has the pool and everything else and other amenities, it couldn't find any other place on health and power property for his treehouse and to have to build it right next to my uncle's bedroom and right next to, against all the city code. All right? So with these considerations, I respectfully ask the committee to take serious consideration of the facts that I just mentioned, that, again, this is a direct violation of building codes. This is a major detriment to my uncle's and my father's health and privacy. And I don't think that this day and age I have to stress out how important the personal privacy is, right? My uncle suffers significant health concerns, and the variation accepted by the Planning Division are in direct violation with multiple Monrovia Municipal Codes. I've named two of them. Another one is named actually in their own write-up. It's 17.12.020. So we have three Monrovia Municipal Codes violations that do not permit acceptance of this variation. That's it. Appreciate your objective and impartial judgment.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and to the city clerk, I believe we have some other interested parties?
Yes, I have admitted to the meeting Mr. Butluk and his connection, I think, is just finalized. Mr. Butluk, if you can hear me, it's your time to speak.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I'll thank you for your time. I didn't hear the first part of it, so I don't know what was said. But as I think you know, my property is kind of a weird shape. And because of the time that I'm spending in my office, which is my converted chicken coop, I thought I'd just kind of put a little deck off the back of my house, or this little area. And I didn't realize, probably incorrectly, that I needed to go through a permit process, and I apologize for that. I've been very respectful of my surrounding neighbors, and I'm kind of just one guy that's down here enjoying this deck. And I'm hoping that you find it, that I can keep this thing where it is. Do you have any questions for me?
No, I don't believe so, but we appreciate your comments. And to the city clerk, do we have any other speakers?
We don't have any other speakers for the item, but we do have the one written comment, which I can go ahead and read for you.
Please do.
This comes from James Moreland. He says, "I've lived at 317 North Madison Avenue, Monrovia, for 25 years. Our house is three houses north of 946 Crescent Drive, and we can see the raised deck from our deck since our property is at a higher elevation. I agree with the variances approved by the Planning Commission. There is a pool in the backyard and a neighbor's pool next door to the north. The raised deck has provided privacy between the neighbor to the north and shade from the sun, which seems to have worked out well for decades." Thank you.
Okay, are there any other speakers or written comments?
No, I'm expecting the audience to answer you. I'm sorry. Flashbacks. No, I have no other written comments or participants.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing, and I do have a question, and I'm not sure if it's going to be staff or Mr. Steele, but the charge that this is in direct violation of the Monrovia Municipal Code, if someone could respond to that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, Mayor, let me just respond. I'm sorry. Let me just respond to a couple of those issues, just to make sure we get it in the record. The first is the question of having a resolution, a draft resolution in your packet for the meeting. As the council knows, but just to make sure the public and the appellant are aware, that when a planning commission makes a decision, as happened in this case, the planning commission voted to approve the variance, and somebody files an appeal, as they have the right to do under the municipal code, it is standard procedure for staff to write a draft resolution for consideration by the city council that upholds the decision of the planning commission. That doesn't mean that you've made the decision to do that. We just give you a draft resolution that you could act on if you decide to make a decision. That's to keep the process moving forward. If, in fact, in this case, you decide to grant the appeal and deny the variance, well, then, two weeks from now, we'll bring back the resolution that puts into effect the decision you make. But staff couldn't prepare a resolution that does the opposite of what the planning commission did. We're in a position of telling you what they did and advising you to defend it, but this is a public hearing, and all five of you make your own decision based on the factors that you deem important. Second, with regard to kind of the general allegation of violations of the municipal code and the provisions that were cited, first of all, the purpose of a variance is to, in unique property-related circumstances, allow a property owner relief from the strict application of the zoning code. So if in a situation where because of size, shape, or topography of a property, the zoning code just doesn't provide the same rights that somebody with a normal lot gets to avail themselves of, that's the time that we provide for a variance. And a variance says, in this situation, you don't have to comply with that particular provision of the municipal code. So yes, there are parts of this application that don't strictly comply with provisions of the municipal code. That's the purpose of a variance. If you believe a variance is warranted based on the size and the shape and the topography of the property, then you can excuse compliance with a particular provision like the setback provisions. Lastly, I would just say that Mr. Avakian cited a couple of sections of the code that are the sections that apply to minor exceptions, which are different than variances. This is not an application for a minor exception. A minor exception is a situation where there's a hardship, there's a smaller type of situation where there are tiny little exceptions that the city staff is allowed to grant, or the DRC is allowed to grant. That's not what this is. This is an application for a variance, which is covered under Section 17.52.010 of the code and 110 of the code. And those findings that Teresa outlined for you in her presentation are the findings that are applicable to this particular decision, not the findings and the percentages that Mr. Avakian read to you. Those don't apply in this case, because this is a variance.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff from the council? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-78 to deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's decision to approve the variances, V 2020-0001, and Victor, which is V 2020-0002.
I second that.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Then I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Council members Crutchington?
Yes.
Chevlin?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Blackburn?
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Before we move on, we just need to announce that with that action, the city council's action on this application is final as of this evening. There is no further reconsideration by the city, and the time within which judicial review of this decision must be sought is governed by Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1094.6.
Very good. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll now move on to public hearing number two, which is Historic Landmark 156 and Mills Act Contract, excuse me, 147 for the property at 353 Patterson. And John Mayer, our senior planner, will give us the staff report. Welcome, John.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Good to see you. The item before you tonight is a request to designate property at 353 Patterson Drive as a local historic landmark. This would be landmark number 156, and it would also include a Mills Act contract for the property owner. The property is a single-family house that was built in 1927. It's designed in the English Tudor Revival style, which was very popular in the 1920s. This was an era when people were nostalgic for the past, and the trend was to bring back some of these old architectural styles. The English Tudor was especially popular in Los Angeles where the idea of this fairy tale house appealed to newcomers and these quaint picturesque communities. I'm sorry, I'm having some trouble here. Thank you. The property at 353 Patterson is a very good example of the English Tudor style, given its deeply pitched multi-gable roof lines, its prominent street-facing gables, and tall windows. This house has several of its original features, including its original size. There hasn't been any additions to this house, and it also has its original details, like the front windows and the front door and its original exterior materials. The property owner actually provided us a historic photo of this house from 1933. It shows that the home's roof looked a little different than it does today. You can see that it has this rounded eyebrow feature in the middle in between those two front gables, which was replaced in the 1940s with a covered porch. However, the structure today still has the key features of that English Tudor Revival style, helping to make this a really good representation of that era. As I mentioned previously, the landmark designation would allow the owner to enter into a Mills Act contract. The city's preservation ordinance offers the Mills Act contract as one of several participation incentives that are meant to encourage property owners of historic properties to voluntarily seek landmark designation. And as a result, we now have 155 landmarks that have been designated since 1996. A Mills Act contract is an agreement between the property owner and the city to allow some tax reduction, provided that the property owner restores and maintains the building in excellent condition for the life of the contract. There are certain conditions of the contract that are primarily aimed at securing health and safety. For example, each structure under the Mills Act must be seismically retrofitted and perform an electrical inspection. We don't want our most noteworthy buildings crumbling or burning down, so we require an electrical inspection and seismic retrofit. The conditions also require that the landmark property be easily visible to the street so that the public can enjoy it and see the historic character of the buildings. And finally, any exterior changes would undergo a special approval process with the Historic Preservation Commission, just to make sure that the house remains intact. So this property owner has already invested some $60,000 for repairs to the house. Advancing to the next slide. Here we go. Thank you. As I mentioned, the property owner has invested some $60,000 making some repairs to the roof, the windows, and the doors, installing some new landscaping, and several other details. As beautiful as this house does, up here in the photos, the owner did identify some issues that she wants to fix. The tax savings will help cover some paint and repair work to the stucco and wood trim of the garage. Repair, replace damaged portions of the driveway and walkway and porch, and replace a nonoriginal garage door with period-appropriate doors, and replace metal-framed window screens and wood frame screens, and any other maintenance items that might come up throughout the life of the contract. On November 10th, 2020, the Historic Preservation Commission agreed that the home is a good example of the English Tudor Revival style and recommended unanimously for the city council to designate this property and enter into a Mills Act contract with the owner. And so for tonight, staff is recommending the council uphold the commission's recommendation and adopt Resolution Number 2020-79, designating this property a historic landmark number 156. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, John. Appreciate the report. I do have a question. Looking at that 1933 photo and the one of today and that change, yeah, right there, the change on that front porch, what level of change does the Historic Preservation Commission deem acceptable on this type of thing?
Well, as I mentioned, the Historic Preservation Commission feels that that change is not extreme enough to deem this not historic. It still has those prominent gables and a lot of its original features. Even the covered porch is something that's significant because it was done during the 1940s when front porches were popular. So the commission feels that the entire package here is historic, even though there were those changes.
Okay, thank you. Any question for staff before we open the public hearing? Hearing none. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing and ask the city clerk if we have any speakers or any correspondents.
I did not receive any correspondence. We do have the property owner in the waiting room. However, she indicated prior to the meeting, she's present just to answer questions of the city council. And if you have none, then she didn't feel the need to speak up on the project.
Okay, any questions for the property owner from the council? Hearing none, we will dismiss that. And you have no other comments?
Correct.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing, and we will entertain a motion.
I'll be more than happy to do it if I can find it on my agenda. While I'm looking, I just want to comment what a gorgeous, gorgeous house this is. I move that we approve historic landmark HL 156 and Mills Act Contract MA 147 for property located at 353 Patterson Drive by property owner Tina Herzog, Resolution Number 2020-79.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Tom, I'd like to have some discussion, but I think I'll do it on our next public hearing regarding the next request for the designation. do it on the next, our next public hearing regarding the next, uh, request for the designation.
So you.
It applies, it applies to both, but I, I, I'll do it at the next one.
Go ahead, as long as you brought it up now.
Oh, okay. Um, I know that this subject has come up several times. I am in favor of the, the Mills Act, uh, designation for this home and the, and the historic landmark designation as well. But I know that we have continued to add to our, our stock, and I think that's wonderful. Um, I especially want to comment, um, due to current legislation that has, they've tried to pass, um, relating the, uh, um, subdividing of single-family lots and things like that, that historic landmarks or historic districts, uh, I understand, would be, um, would be saved from that. Uh, and I know that that legislation is going to be coming back, but coming back to Monrovia, um, I know we've asked, uh, staff in the past if we could have an accounting of where we stand in terms of the property tax, um, um, I guess, impact to the city of Monrovia and going forward, because of several years ago, we did change this to a rolling, um, fifty-year mark. Um, and that will open up to far more, um, requests for designation, I would assume. So just, would like to know, just for, um, a review and discussion of where exactly we stand and where we're going. But again, I am very much, uh, in favor of the designation. I think our historic landmarks, uh, are, uh, very, very, um, near and dear to all of us, um, and contribute to the value, property values in the city of Monrovia, and just the charm of, of Monrovia. But I think we also need to take a, uh, bigger look at where we stand with the overall process.
Well, we, we must be doing something right. We just heard from the assessor's office that Monrovia led the entire county on, uh, the increase in property values.
Right.
Um, so that's a good thing. But are there any other? A- any other comments before we call for the vote?
I'll, I'll just make the, the one, the information that I was able to get from staff is that, and I don't, I believe this is current, but the current, uh, impact, uh, to the city is around one hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. And I know that they had, um, Mills Acts are, contracts are supposed to be, uh, ten years, and what is our, our process then in reviewing those on a, on a regular, uh, basis? Like I said, I'm, I'm for this. I just think it's maybe time that we, uh, revisited or at least reviewed it. That's all.
Okay. Well, why don't we vote on this?
Okay.
And then, um, if you'd like to put in a request of staff during your report, we can do that then.
Okay.
A- any other comments on this item? Hearing none. I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Council members Crutchington.
An enthusiastic yes.
Council member Chevlin.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Blackburn.
No.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes. Thank you. And thank you to, uh, Tina Herzog, a beautiful home, and we appreciate you making it as nice as it is. Thank you. So we'll now move on to PH three, historic landmark one fifty-seven and Mills Act contract one forty-eight for the property at three sixty-three Patterson. And John Mayer, you're back up again.
Yes, I thank you, Mayor. Um, this, uh, property at three six three Patterson Drive is actually right next door to three five three Patterson. It's sometimes referred to as fraternal twin. It's also, um, an English, um, revival style. This would be landmark number one fifty-seven and also includes, uh, um, Mills Act contract with the property owners Vicki and Glenn Murtes. Um, just like the property next door, this property is another good, uh, representation of the English revival style. It has several of its original features, including that central eyebrow feature that the property next door once had. Um, most of the windows are wood-framed and appear to be original. Uh, there is a non-original aluminum-framed door and windows on the very front of the building. Um, but other than that, this house, um, is still a, a very good representation of the English revival style. Uh, the tax savings from the Mills Act, uh, will help the owner with the, some front porch repair and replacing those non-original metal-framed windows with more period-appropriate wood-framed windows and doors. Uh, the driveway, as you can see, is also buckling in some places and will need to be replaced. The owners are also planning to, uh, replace a kitchen door and porch cover, uh, portico with something more in keeping with the historic character of the house. And of course, the owners will, will need to keep the house maintained in excellent condition, just like all of our other, uh, landmark properties. Uh, this one was also, uh, reviewed by the Historic Preservate, Preservation Commission on November tenth, recommended approval, uh, unanimously. And for that, staff recommends, um, approval of this historic landmark at three six three Patterson Drive, um, and approval of the Mills Act contract, um, and, uh, resolution number twenty twenty dash eighty for, for this designation. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, John. Good report. Any questions of staff?
Um, I have one, uh, John. When people with landmarks are replacing driveways, uh, do we allow for them to, um, install permeable pavers?
Yes. Uh, this is a type of improvement, uh, that doesn't require a building permit and thus, uh, doesn't require, um, approval from the Historic Preservation Commission. And yes, that would be, um, uh, an appropriate material for the driveway.
Uh, that's great because, um, um, they can actually get an, uh, additional in, in, uh, decrease in taxes by, um, uh, noting to the tax assessor, um, that the amount of permeable surface, uh, on the property has increased. So just, I'd mention that. It's also lovely.
Good. Any other questions of staff? Hearing none. I will, uh, open the public hearing. This is a public hearing, and I'll ask the city clerk if we have anyone waiting, uh, to join our meeting, or if you have any correspondence.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we do not have any, uh, written, um, comments received. I am admitting, uh, Vicki Meritas, one of the property owners, uh, into the meeting. I think she is now with us somewhere. Yes. Uh, so, um, Vicki, if you want to make any comments. The floor is yours, Vicki. Do you, are you hearing us?
Yes, I am.
Did you want to make comments regarding this, or are you, um, just here for questions?
Um, here for questions, but just, uh, thank you for, um, you know, having this process in place, and thank you for, you know, having so many homes, you know, preserved and for the city to value the older homes and preserving them the way they are. I just, um, really am in love with the city of Monrovia and just the charm of the, the city. So thank you.
Well, we appreciate you taking such good care of yours. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move, um, that historic landmark HL one fifty-seven and Mills Act contract MA one forty-eight for property that we approved, uh, these for property located at three sixty-three Patterson Drive by property owners Vicki and Glenn Murtes, resolution number twenty twenty dash eighty.
I'll second.
Another lovely home.
Yes, it is. So we've got a motion and a second. Or is there any other discussion? Hearing none. I will ask our master municipal clerk to call the roll.
Council members Crutchington.
Yes.
Chevlin.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Blackburn.
No.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to reports of city manager and staff and RCM one, city council directives. Mr. Feek, you're up.
Just a couple of brief updates for you. Um, one, I'll note that, you're listening to the last council member items, uh, council member Chevlin asked about just general review discussion of where we stand, where we're going related to our historic landmark designations and those that contract process. We'll prepare something. I'll add that one to the council directives. Um, one directive update related to electric vehicles and electric vehicle charging stations. Last Friday, we went and picked up, uh, four, and then the final remaining two electric vehicles for the city's fleet, uh, from Sierra Auto. Very excited to get the electric vehicles. Um, I was able to personally drive one off the lot and bring it to, uh, the Public Works Corporation yard. That was my first time, uh, being able to do that, so very exciting. We also have a meeting scheduled this Thursday with one of our local companies, Obasto, who produces electric charging stations, and we're going to be pursuing a, a public-private partnership, uh, hopefully, here in Monrovia that can showcase, you know, different ways to charge, but also provide, uh, charging stations throughout the community. Um, council's been very clear about pursuing alternative energy projects, uh, and doing what we can for the environment, making, you know, finding cost savings, uh, you know, a whole variety of other benefits for this. Couple, uh, minor updates before we invite staff to make a couple of presentations. Um, one is the, uh, the county order, the updated county health order that recently came out affecting, uh, outdoor dining. Um, there are also new directives that could perhaps be applicable to city of Monrovia. Some of our winter programs, we're in the middle of reviewing the order right now, but we do have some programs scheduled to start as early as tomorrow. Uh, we've been very careful, very cautious, and been implementing safety protocols since day one, um, so we're very hopeful that it does, that it doesn't affect our programs, uh, but we'll be reviewing and providing more updates to council here very soon. Uh, last item I, I want to share, and you'll hear more formal presentation tonight related to the Bobcat Fire, um, uh, as part of tonight's discussion, our public works director, Sean Sullivan, will be providing an update on damage assessments and what our plans are looking into the, uh, winter season. But I do want to note that the city mailed out letters, provided letter copies to several residents who could be affected, the intersection, uh, near Ridgeline and Oakley Drives, um, but those letters went out, uh, late, uh, earlier today. They were mailed out. They were hand-delivered. I'll be sharing a couple of that with city council tomorrow in, in just a regular update, but you'll learn more about that here in just a few moments. And so that's my, uh, directive update and looking forward to a couple of presentations from staff.
Thank you, Dylan. Any questions for the city manager? Okay, we will move on to RCM two, um, regarding the Gold Line signal improvements, and, uh, Alex Tachiki will be giving us the staff report. Welcome, Alex. Well, I think it's going to be Alex.
We're just, uh, switching back and forth between, uh, staff and in and out, but we got it coming.
Well, I apologize for the technical difficulties. Um, good evening, Mayor Adams and, and members of the city council. Um, I'll be providing the, uh, update on the Metro L-line intersection improvements
Thank you.
Um, so just to give a little bit of background to the council again, um, when the L-line was constructed, um, Metro and partner agencies, including Monrovia, utilized the best available technology at the time for the impacted traffic signals. Um, the three signals are the three intersections in particular that we continue to monitor over the last several years, um, but we still continue to experience a little bit of trouble with our Dwardy Road and Myrtle Avenue, Dwardy Road in California, and then Dwardy Road in Mountain. Um, future improvements have always been anticipated at these intersections. Um, like anything else, technology continues to improve, and so it was always thought that as technology improved, um, so too would the improvements at these intersections. Um, it's also important to note that, um, through a separate project, um, staff has worked with Caltrans, Metro, and several other agencies in the area on a project called the Connected Corridors Project. Um, the reason for the improvements today is due to that project in particular. Um, staff, Metro, and Caltrans agree that the reas, uh, these three intersections in particular, um, had very heavy impacts, and, uh, the improvements were, were really well, uh, needed in these areas. Um, so just to go over, oh, oh, we skipped one. Um, just to go over some of the improvements that have been done, um, roughly about ten days ago, um, improvements at Myrtle Avenue and Dwardy Road have been made. Um, those improvements include new equipment being installed in the traffic signal cabinet, enhanced traffic signal timing, um, reduction in gate arm downtime, um, and I think it's really important to note on that one, um, that gate arm downtime was actually cut in half, um, roughly was about a minute, um, and it's about thirty-five seconds, um, at this moment. Um, and then one of the features of the enhanced traffic signal timing is that traffic movements that had been delayed by the L-line actually receive higher priority, um, and that's in order to reduce the amount of wait time for vehicular traffic when they're sitting there waiting for the L-line to pass. Um, so these next two slides are just going to show or illustrate the two movements that we've seen out in the field that have been delayed due to the L-line. Um, this first one here is the eastbound Dwardy Road movement that is making a left-hand turn. And then the next one that is impacted is, is the direct northbound movement. Um, this is coming up Myrtle Avenue. So what's next? Um, what can the community expect over the next several weeks? Um, Dwardy Road and Mountain Avenue is the next location set to receive the similar timing improvements, um, software and equipment upgrades. Um, the following intersection after that would be Dwardy Road in California. Um, we anticipate Dwardy Road in California to be somewhere in the mid to late December range. Um, so we're hopeful that overall, all three intersections would be improved by the end of this year or early twenty twenty-one. Um, and then with that being said, that concludes my quick update, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Alex?
Uh, just a comment from me. Uh, I think we've all sat and experienced those delays, and I'm just really delighted to hear that staff has stayed on this. Um, and to make this as, uh, least amount of annoying as possible, so thank you.
Ditto.
Yeah, ditto across the board. I know particularly people traveling north from, uh, below Hunt, or Dwardy Road will be very pleased to see the change. I know there's been a lot of frustration.
Yeah, they spent a lot of hours down there, Alex, right there by Los Chillos, Chili's or something like that.
Right. And, and actually, staff, we, we actually went out there earlier today, this, uh, earlier this week in the morning, and then we observed the PM time, uh, before this meeting as well. Um, and I think the improvements that have been, um, proposed at these three intersections, at least in this one in particular, um, it looks to be working fairly well. Um, it looks to be performing exactly as it's been planned. Um, the gate arm, uh, the gate arm downtime was about thirty-five seconds. Um, and then it was giving priority either to that left-hand turn from eastbound Dwardy, or it was giving priority to the northbound, um, Myrtle movement, um, depending on which one was waiting longer. So, um, we're really pleased with those improvements, and, uh, we'll continue to monitor them.
Yeah, it's a good change. It's a good improvement, big improvement.
Very good. Any other comments?
Good job.
Alex, good job. Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, RCM three, post-Bobcat Fire mitigation efforts. Sean Sullivan, our public works director, will give us a staff report. Welcome, Sean.
Sean is just replacing, uh, Alex at the staff desk, and he'll be on momentarily.
Good evening, Mr. Adams and members of the council.
Good evening, Mr. Adams and members of the council. It's my, this evening I'm here to provide a brief overview to the council of some of the post-Bobcat Fire mitigation efforts the city is taking, working on at this time, related to potential mud and debris flows. As we are all aware, the Bobcat Fire burned approximately 115,000 acres of the San Gabriel Mountains, including the foothills of Monrovia this past September. Well, fortunately, the city did not suffer, suffer any loss of life or structures resulting from this fire. There was considerable burning of Canyon Park, the hillside world in his preserve, and in the foothill areas above some of the residential neighborhoods. Since the fire took place, staff has been aided by the Los Angeles County Flood Control District, the Burn Area Emergency Response Team, which is a part of the US Forest Service, and the Natural Resources Conservation Service, which is a subsidiary of the US Department of Agriculture. All of these have been, agencies have been assist, assisting us with assessing the burned hillsides for the possibility of mud and debris flows that may result from rain events. This extensive review has yielded concerns of these possible mud and debris flows in the areas of Ridgeline Drive and Oakley, Ridgeline Drive and Oakley Drive, as well as within Canyon Park. Sorry, a little, little distracted here, my apologies. At the top of Ridgeline and Oakley Drives, the Los Angeles County Flood Control District operates the Oakley Debris Basin, which is in place to collect mud and debris flow coming down from the hills. This is the area that's circled in red there on the PowerPoint, if you're able to see that. Assessment of the burn area shows that much of the area that is within and beyond the area, kind of highlighted with the, the yellow arrow to the left there, has been impacted by the fire. The concern here is that the drainage from this area sits below the debris structure that's in place at the top of Ridgeline there, basically indicating that any mud or debris flow that may originate from this area that sits below the basin there would ultimately have the possibility of, of exiting this area and flowing onto Ridgeline and Oakley Drives. There, it's worth noting that there's a small drainage structure at the bottom of this canyon area that's burned out, and while that will take some of the debris, the concern that has been identified by LA County Flood Control District staff is that, given the, you know, possibility of extensive rains and the amount of debris that sits up there, that that basin will not be sufficient to capture any debris that moves along with it, again, creating the, the concern of this mud and debris coming out onto Ridgeline and Oakley Drives. For, for a little reference or perspective on what we're talking about here, this is where Ridgeline, at the very top, turns around, kind of bends around. If you go up this here, there's a couple of private driveways that lead into a private road that services, that referenced drainage structure. Further up the road provides access to one of our water tanks, and the area in concern is actually a canyon that sits off to the left, if you will, below the existing drainage structure. Based off of the review and the engineering that's been done by the county and the National Resources Conservation Service, the idea to, in order to mitigate the mud and debris flows that we believe are possible under rain events, the county flood control and the NRCS are finalizing design plans for the placement of K-rail along portions of Oakley and Ridgeline Drive. Essentially, the area that we would be looking at the placement of these K-rail are from, on that private road around the drainage structure, down to that area that was depicted in the previous photograph, and as far low as 800 Oakley Drive that's kind of highlighted on the map there. The plans are still under review, so it's not finalized where exactly the K-rail would be placed, or how extensive it would be, but the debris barriers would be put in place to control mud and debris flow with the idea of providing as much safety as possible for the residents and the properties that are located within this area. The placement of these facilities would allow for mud and debris to not enter these private properties, but to maintain within the street where they can be tended to and removed by city and county staff. Certainly, the design contemplates the topography of the area, takes a look at the historic drainage records, and so while the plan, again, is not finalized, we believe that these will be the, the kind of bounds at which the K-rail would likely need to be placed. And certainly, we understand that these measures will undoubtedly create consternation on behalf of the residents. You know, the experts that we've been working with really reassure us that we believe these are the appropriate and proper measures to protect life and property in that area. The recommendation would be, much like after the Madison Fire, to leave these measures in place for up to five years to allow for the full recovery of the hillsides to prevent any future mud and debris flows in this area. Again, as, at the, at the time, the county and the NRCS are working on the final plans for this, but as Dylan alluded to earlier in his report, staff is working well underway to begin and be ready for the implementation upon the receipt of these plans. As, as Mr. Feek mentioned, we've circulated notices today, not only to folks in the directly impacted areas highlighted on this map, but to all of the residences on that circle of Oakley and Ridgeline. Well, some folks will be more impacted by others based on the placement of the K-rail and the proximity to their home. Undoubtedly, everybody who lives in that area will have some kind of impacts, whether it's through the presence of heavy equipment, traffic flows, or other, other things that take place during not only the placement of these K-rail, but also during wet season events that take place. The notice was, again, hand-delivered to every residence. We've also mailed a copy to each place to ensure that everyone receives it. Again, the notice provides an overview of what we're working on and what residents can likely expect, but most importantly, the notice advises the residents of a community meeting that we will be holding next Wednesday, December 9th, at 7:00 PM over Zoom. The meeting will be facilitated by public work staff. We will be joined by key city staff, as well as representatives of LA County Flood Control and the National Resource Conservation Service. The intention would be to provide an overview of the planned mitigation efforts and facilitate discussion and questions about what will be taking place and what residents in this area are to expect. Beyond the meeting, staff will be working to provide robust outreach to the impacted area, and will make ourselves available to meet with and discuss the impacts of this initiative to individual residents, especially those in the greatest area of impact. From there, we are optimistic that the final plans for this work can be brought to the council as soon as possible. Optimistically, we're hoping for December 15th. Staff is currently working with contractors in the county on options for the deployment of these K-rail, and hopefully would be in a position to begin deploying it as soon as possible upon the approval of the final plans. In addition, as I mentioned earlier on, one of the other areas of concern that was identified during this assessment was the area of Canyon Park. At this time, our staff and our consulting engineering firm are reviewing similar concerns within Canyon Park related to mud and debris flow. We have a draft plan that we're presently reviewing that contemplates the placement of K-rail at a couple of key areas within that facility, primarily for structure protection of our existing park resources that are available within there. Fortunately, we're in the position where Canyon Park is, is closed and will remain closed indefinitely, and it sits adjacent directly to the saw pit wash. So our primary concern there is really just protecting the property and clearing the path for any water, mud, debris, and stuff that flows out of that Canyon Park facility into the existing saw pit wash. You know, overall, we certainly understand that these, these initiatives will be challenging and sensitive, and staff will be communicating with the public, with the council, and with the community as often as possible through the development of these initiatives. We'll continue to provide updated information as often as possible through direct communication with the residents, updated information on the website through the city manager's weekly newsletter as appropriate. Again, we have a community meeting to, to review this on next Wednesday, December 9th, and we'll be bringing it back to the council for further review and consideration as soon as the updated information is available. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good report, Sean. Any questions for Sean? So if I understand it correctly, Sean, you'll be bringing back to us the finalized K-rail plan before it's implemented?
That is correct. Everything that we're working off of now is based off of our field visits and layouts that have been provided by the folks in the field. As they get the final plan implemented, it'll be reviewed and provided through the engineers from these appropriate agencies. So prior to putting anything in the streets, we want to make sure that we've communicated that appropriately to the, to the public, as well as kept the council informed.
Alrighty. Thank you so much. We appreciate the update.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to reports to city council members, and we'll start with Mr. Spicer.
I have no report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Chevlin.
Hi, thank you. Yes, and thank you, Dylan, for adding that item to our initiatives, our, the council initiatives, and look forward to hearing that report. I do, I do want to make it perfectly clear, I am very much in favor of our program for designating historic homes and the Mills Act. I just want a review of the, of the process, just so we can see and evaluate where we're at and where we're going. I did notice on Facebook and on our, on our city website that, as you probably can understand, we won't be doing a state-of-the-city address in January, but on our Facebook page, it says that the city council is asking for, or the city is asking for the community's input on what you would like to hear in a, a state-of-the-city address in 2021, and you can go to our city website, and you go under city council, and under city council, it says state-of-the-city, and you, there'll be a form there, and you can ask your question, or what you would like to have included in our state-of-the-city. I did want to mention that today I did sit in on the Southern California Association of Governments SCAG, their 11th Annual Economic Summit. I won't give a recap of that. I'll wait until our next meeting in the interest of time. Tomorrow, we do have a, the COG has a council of governments, has a homeless committee meeting that I will be chairing, and that's at 8:30 AM, and if you're interested in tuning in for that, you go to the website, the SGVCOG.org, and look under the agendas, and you can get the Zoom login for that. One of our presentations is going to be the Arcadia Homeless Resource Hub, which should be very interesting, and there will be a field trip later. It's not open to the public, but one of our staff members, city staff members will be going along with me, and we are going to check out what the city of Arcadia is doing regarding their resource hub. And I, I wanted to ask, Dylan, I don't know, maybe if under the TOMS report, you want to elaborate on that, that the county is offering, it's under their website, keeplacountydining.lacda.org. It's a really long site. They're, they're offering grants up to $30,000. Did you want to make mention of that? I meant to ask you under your report.
Why don't you go ahead, Becky?
I don't, I don't have all the information. I checked with Dylan, and he said he had pushed that out, but, so we get it on the record in our council meeting. I thought I'd let him elaborate a little bit.
Okay.
It's a county program that they just sent the information out today. We forwarded it out immediately. I believe the application period starts tomorrow and goes through the end of the week.
Starts on Thursday.
Is it Thursday, Thursday through Sunday? It's a very narrow window, and we're trying to get it out there as quickly as we could. The, the county is offering up to $30,000 in aid to support local businesses. It appears to be restaurant-specific for various services, payroll, operational costs. They are limiting it to 2,500 applicants, and, you know, their, their safer-at-home order recently issued affected more than 30,000 restaurants across the county. So it is going to be very competitive. We're expecting everybody's going to be applying, so we want to make sure that people here in Monrovia get as much advance notice as possible, but that was just announced today.
And it's, yeah, the website is very, very long, but it is posted on their Facebook, the LA County Facebook page. It is, you can find, it's a, a blue flyer that's on there, and it has, you can get more information, but I, I just wanted to make sure we mentioned that in our, in our council meeting. And since we've had to dispense with so much of our tradition, I wanted to ask you, Mayor, you normally ask that we have an ugly sweater tradition, and I was wondering if we might do that at our next council meeting, which is on Tuesday, the 15th. We've got a lot of serious stuff going on, but I, I just wanted to know if we could continue the tradition.
So that was going to be in my report, but you go, you go ahead.
I'm just asking. Do we want to, do we want to go ahead and do that?
You go ahead, Becky.
Well, do we want to do it, guys? Am I saying yes? So at our, at our next meeting then, on the, the 15th, ugly sweater tradition. So there, there you go.
Okay, is that it?
That's, that's it, and the Monrovia Today is available online. I did, I printed out a black and white copy. It is available, the activity guide, but as Dylan said, things are, have been changing so quickly, and some of the, or the new health orders may be impacting some of the activities that are posted in that activity guide. So please check with the community services, or who's ever hosting the event, before making plans to join, because they, we might have some issues. So, but it is available online, and with that, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, ho, ho, ho. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Councilmember Crujington.
Thank you. We approved in our consent calendar a couple of items relating to stormwater, and thought this would be an excellent opportunity to give you an update, which Alex Tachiki will do for us.
All right. Thank you for the introduction, Councilmember Crujington. So just to give the council an update on some stormwater items, I know Councilmember Crujington has been making regular updates at the council meetings, so we're really just filling in the gaps and, and really just providing the council some really key updates. Just to back up a little bit regarding stormwater, in response to the 2012 MS4 permit, the cities of Arcadia, Bradbury, Dwardy, Monrovia, Sierra Madre, and then LA County Flood Control District and LA County Public Works, I mean, I'm sorry, I omitted Azusa, but Azusa at the time, developed the Enhanced Watershed Management Program. This program was approved by the LA Regional Board in 2016, but that plan contemplated about $1.4 billion in stormwater investments and improvements throughout our region. Quickly after that, and quickly after we received that initial estimate, led by our team here in the city, we quickly engaged with the regional board staff on trying to revise those efforts, knowing that $1.4 billion is not going to be a feasible option. And I think as of last year, and believe it or not, we're about 18 months after our post-unanimous approval of the reWIMP. We actually submitted that in April of 2018 to the regional board. It took about a year, and a lot of meetings with the regional board staff, environmental NGOs, to really vet through that process and develop the reWIMP. And so, as I stated earlier, in April of 2019, we were happy to announce that the reWIMP was unanimously approved by the LA Regional Board, and that substantially reduced our costs from $1.4 billion as a group, down to an estimated about $100 million to $200 million. The reason for that substantial decrease in costs is due to the fact that they were allowing us to use local data rather than generalized data that was downstream, and they allowed us to use a more systematic approach to our projects. So rather than looking at projects on a case-by-case and location-based approach, the regional board allowed us to look at it from an entire watershed basis, and so really, we saw a lot of efficiencies picked up due to that effort. So the reWIMP was five regional projects rather than the 10 contemplated in the Enhanced Watershed Management Program, and then we've reprioritized where the green streets or distributed BMP projects would be placed. And so the eWIMP and the big cost to that project, or that program in particular, were green streets. That was 432 miles of green streets. I think the comparison that we like to throw out there at a few of these meetings is that 432 miles is the equivalent of from Monrovia to Tucson, Arizona. So it is not an easy endeavor to take to try and improve 432 miles of roadway, and so it was, it was good to see that the regional board allowed us this, we'll call it a variance or exception, and has allowed us to do a more of cost-efficient approach. So what else have we done lately? In 2018, led by Councilmember Crujington, Monrovia was instrumental in helping LA County pass Measure W. That established the Safe Clean Water Program, which is being implemented by a branch of LA County Public Works and Flood Control District. That created a dedicated funding source for stormwater compliance for the cities. Locally, through our capital improvement projects, we've actually constructed nine torrent drywells throughout the city in various areas to help alleviate drainage and flooding issues. As Councilmember Crujington alluded, we've, we've approved at the council level a few items. One of them in particular was the municipal transfer agreement that we approved in August of 2020. That meant that Monrovia is getting access to about half a million dollars on an annual basis for local stormwater programs. And then earlier tonight, we approved a review process of non-governmental agency applications in the Safe Clean Water Program. This will help ensure that the dollars coming into Monrovia are spent in an effective and an efficient manner for stormwater compliance. And then actually, over the summer, Councilmember Crujington was elected Chair of the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments Water Policy Committee, and so through that position and, and pri- Um, and so through that position and, and prior to that, she was the Vice Chair of this committee. Um, through that role, um, Councilmember Crujington was really instrumental in advocating for legislation. Um, and Councilmember Chevlin has also been instrumental in her efforts in the governing board. Um, the COG has been very, very active in trying to pass legislation for stormwater compliance efforts. Um, in addition to that, um, Councilmember Crujington has been a key advocate for fair regulations through the MS four permit negotiation. Um, and has been really instrumental in being a problem solver, helping bridge the gap between environmental NGOs who have previously been known to litigate first and uh, ask questions later. Um, and the, and the regulators and agencies. And so Councilmember Crujington has been really, really instrumental in advancing those efforts. Um, and then for our watershed group, um, as I mentioned earlier, we have five regional projects and we are all, and we're making tangible progress in all five. Um, earlier tonight, we approved a design contract with Craft Water Engineering to design the Encanto Park Stormwater Capture Project. Um, I'm happy to report that actually through the Safe Clean Water Program, we received two point four eight million dollars to design and construct that. That means that we're actually not, we do not have to utilize any of that local return funding pot, the half a million dollars that we receive annually. And we don't have to use any of that towards this project, and so it's helping offset some of those costs for that particular project. The Arcadia Wash Diversion, um, received Technical Resources Program assistance. What that means is that the county sets aside about three hundred thousand dollars dedicated to this project that helps design it up to thirty percent and preliminary site assessment. Um, and then for round two of the Safe Clean Water Grant Application Process, we've um, we've put in two applications, one of them for the Rio Honda Ecosystem Project. Um, currently through our local return, um, we're, we're utilizing some of those funds to conduct environmental and site investigation. Um, and then the LA County Arboretum Project, um, which I'm actually happy to report, it didn't make it into this slide. Um, but it made it to the scoring committee earlier this morning and we received a, a, a good score for that. Um, an eighty-one, which means that it's eligible for grant funding, um, which means that at the Watershed Area Steering Committee Meeting, um, that committee can contemplate um, allocating funding for this project. And then Basin Three E is our last project. Um, we're currently utilizing local return funds to fund the environmental and site investigation of that project. Um, and so through this process, we've learned that uh, making friends is, is a lot easier or a lot more um, beneficial than trying to make them after the fact. Um, so we've reached out to a number of environmental NGOs, um, community stakeholders. And through that process, through that application process, we've actually received uh, letters of support from the Pasadena Audubon Society. We have a few local members here of that chapter. Uh, Amigos de los Rios, um, the Monrovia Historical Society, and then members of the Save Baldwin Lake Task Force. Um, unfortunately, there were a few um, community members that chose not to support us in a letter. Um, but we did conduct outreach meetings to a few other folks. And so Nature For All, the School District, and the Arboretum Foundation were three um, organizations that we also held um, outreach meetings for. And so just some next steps and what to look for in the ne- in the next year or so. Um, the group is considering um, the formation of a Joint Powers Authority. This is preliminary. Um, but this is really to help bind the cities and the county together, um, as we advance in construction and have future obligations for operations and maintenance. Um, the Joint Powers Authority could serve as a vehicle to help us um, both fund and manage those activities. And then um, construction for the Encanto Park Project is set to start in early twenty twenty-two. Um, we anticipate the design of that project to be a hundred percent designed by the end of next year, which means that we can go out to bid for that project. And so um, as I mentioned earlier, that project has a hundred percent construction costs um, already allocated for it. So we're really um, in a good position for that project. Um, and then we're also optimistic about receiving future grant funds through the Safe Clean Water Program for our two applications. Both the Arboretum and the Rio Honda Ecosystem Project. Um, we'll know a little more probably in about June of twenty twenty-one, um, when the Board of Supervisors is able to confirm the stormwater investment plans, but we, we think that we have a very favorable chance to receive funding on both projects. Um, and then the projects that we aren't advancing through the regional project or through the regional um, Safe Clean Water Program, um, so Basin Three E, we're anticipating thirty percent design on that project to be complete within the next year as well. So a lot going on. Um, but that completes my update on stormwater and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Alex. Any questions for Alex?
No questions, just a comment. Great job and thank you for, you and Gloria for hanging in there for us in the trenches, doing the hard work.
And I'd like to add, Alex is the uh, Chair currently of the San Gabriel Valley COG. Technical Advisory Committee to the Water Policy Committee. That's a long title. But here's the deal, um, none of us, or very few of us as electeds have the technical know-how to wade through this stuff, which in, in working with the regional board about the permit, every technical decision comes with a price tag. And we don't know how to push for the projects that have lower price tags unless we've got people like Alex working on our behalf. So I just want to do a big shout out to um, Alex and Sean and Dylan for their incredible support.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other uh, questions of staff or comments? Okay, Alex, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do. Um, Gloria, anything else?
That's it for me.
All right, that's a good report. Uh, Mayor Protem Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Um, I had uh, three things under my name. Uh, the first one, the report from the LA County Assessor was done earlier this evening, so we'll scratch that one off. Um, appointment to fill an unscheduled vacancy on the Motab Board. We had a Motab mentor member uh, leave and uh, we had to replace that person. Um, you, you know, the, the, the really great news is we have more people who want all of these positions than we have positions. And I can remember in a time when we used to have to beg people, literally go out and beg people to be willing to serve. And, and now we have more than we need. The sad part is, you only get to pick one. And we had some great candidates. But when it got down to it, the committee uh, selected Gina Ammon. And that is a recommendation uh, that I will make tonight, un- unless there's any objection from the council. Hearing none, thank you. We'll now move on to a discussion of alternatives.
Oh, Tom, can I just make one comment um, and recommendation? I'd like staff to look into the possibility of, since we've got so much energy and people interested in serving on Motab, that we look at it possibly expanding that group from five members to seven. It's definitely all hands on deck as we're about to discuss. Um, and um, I think the um, if we've got that much interest and it's gonna be so hard on a lot of these business owners um, to bring their businesses back to life, having more minds put on it might help. So I, it just is a suggestion, I'd like to see staff look at, at maybe expanding it from five to seven. Do you do?
Very good.
What's obvious?
Thank you. And, and the last item on uh, my report is a discussion of alternatives to the LA County Health Department. And I know uh, the city park will be reading some comments that were received earlier. This is not designed to remove us from the LA County Health System. Um, but clearly, something's not right. And it's not just the restaurant closures. We can go back to when Monrovia High School planned a drive-through graduation ceremony. And the original uh, notice from the LA County Health Department was, no, you can't do that. Uh, after further review, the LA County Health Department selected the Monrovia model for the model that the entire county was supposed to use. And I realize that at times it's always easier to say no than yes, because once you say no, your work is done. But we've always been hopeful and we've heard from a lot of different people over uh, this pandemic is that we need to follow the science. And I know the um, the LA County Board of Supervisors had a recent meeting. And it was asked at that meeting if there was ever any evidence whatsoever that outdoor dining was causing the increase in COVID nineteen cases, and they said no. Um, and the rest is his- history, but we're, we're very appreciative tonight. We've got Anders Corey with us. And Anders is the, and I, Anders, I hope I get this title correctly. The, the Health Director for Supervisor Berger. Supervisor Berger, Berger is obviously our supervisor. And uh, Anders, we want to welcome you and see if you can give us any input into what's going on with the Health Department. It seems as though, absent science, they're making a lot of decisions just based apparently on a whim. But we appreciate you being here.
Hey, thank you, Mayor, for having me. Uh, again, Anders Corey, uh, Health Deputy for Supervisor Berger. And obviously that entails all things COVID response. Um, obviously been an exciting time to be handling that. And as you mentioned, you kind of laid out the situation, the current um, state we're in. Restaurants were closed last week. Um, as Supervisor Berger actively opposed it and tried to have it overturned, but was overruled by the majority of the board. Supervisor Haunt supported our efforts. And I think, to capture it, I mean, we've had outdoor dining open since July. That's when we closed indoor dining, went only outdoor. It's had no problems. We've had, we saw cases reach some of the lowest points in the entire country. And down to very, very low positivity rates, case rates, hospitalizations rates. And then suddenly, without any real policy change or any dramatic change whatsoever, our cases over the last month have gone through the roof. And our hospitalizations have gone through the roof and our positivity rate has gone through the roof. I think there's a lot of concern from the Department of Public Health and this is where they're coming from of, we didn't make any policy changes. It's just kind of an attitude change that has led to everything spiking and surging and threatening our healthcare system and it's wanted them to respond in some way. And as we all know, it's largely attributed to private gatherings of people getting together either for small or intimate gatherings of people that aren't in their household or bigger parties that we all know are happening that have led to this increase, because again, nothing's open in the county. Schools aren't open, churches aren't open, businesses aren't really open for the most part. And so, trying to get the message across that if you're gonna have private gatherings, have them and, you know, be safe, be smart in the way you do. That's been the supervisor's approach. Everyone's got freedoms. She keeps saying, I still live in America, right? And she's, that's her, that's kind of her approach. And I, she has the right to freely gather with, with those around her. Um, be smart about it. And we're trying to get the message that people still need to use caution. So I mean, we've had, we had seven thousand five hundred cases today. It's higher than we've ever had. Our hospitalizations are higher than we've ever had. Um, our Department of Health Services is still confident that we can, we're not overwhelmed at this point. Um, and we're hoping that things will continue to cycle and slow back down a little bit. But that's kind of the background from where this, from where this came from.
So what would you say to, to someone who says, because we've heard virtually every level of politicians say, we need to follow the science. And clearly, in this case, no one's following anything, um, or at least it appears as though they're not. Wha- wha- what do we say to those folks?
Yeah, I think that was the supervisor's main frustration is A, this is unfair to businesses that have been following the rules, that have not contributed to the spread and have invested significantly in opening safely. And the flip side is, we're gonna put hundreds of thousands of people out of work for something that may not even do anything. Um, I think the hope of those that have, that were pushing this and now, which is my hope, because now it's something that we have to deal with. My hope is that, and their hope was that, using this kind of measure would get the attention of those that are gathering privately. Uh, like, the science, the, the, the most experts that we talk to externally say, you can put as many rules around people's private lives as you want to. But at the end of the day, people don't listen to rules around their private life. They're gonna do what they want to. So the only way to control the behavior that's happening privately is to get a hold of things that are more public. Um, now again, the supervisor would not agree with that line of thinking. She does not think that we should be punishing businesses for people's private behavior. Um, but that is the, that is the the, the science behind um, what was, what was put forward and what was decided.
You know, in, in talking to so many of the restaurant owners in town, and, and again, this isn't just about the restaurants. But initially, when uh, COVID nineteen hit, there was, um, you could still dine inside restaurants, but there, they had to remove some of the tables. And then it was, well, you could remove some of the tables, but you had to have plastic in between the tables. And then it was, well, now you can't be in the building, you have to go outside. And then it was, well, you can go outside, but you gotta have plastic in between the tables. And it almost seems like um, somebody's got a dartboard up on the wall and they're throwing darts at trying to find the solution to a problem, which isn't really following the science. But it, it, what do we say to the restaurant owners who've spent tens of thousands of dollars under county order, only to be told that, well, apparently, that wasn't right?
Yeah, I mean, the supervisor's position is, we're going to keep working. We're gonna keep pushing to overturn this. I know the, the measure was set for, to be in effect for three weeks. Uh, we're tracking the numbers da- daily and hope that we'll have a, a gap in the system where things start to go back the right way and we can allow them to continue operating again. On, on some, on some fronts, there's been a lot of learning that's been good. Obviously, we're in safer at home again, and the original safer at home closed everything. The safer at home is allowing a lot of activities that we recognize. No risk, you can still go to retail, you can still shop, um, et cetera. But at the same time, there's some things where the changes don't seem to match. Back, be backed up by science, the more backed up by hunches and the supervisor was very staunch that we're not gonna unemploy hundreds of thousands of people over a hunch that may not work. That's just not how we do things. Um, and it's frustrating. We completely get it. Completely get where you're coming from. Councilmember Chevlin, are you?
Yes, I wanted to ask a question. Since today the numbers were up considerably, over seven thousand. And uh, Governor Newsom, just recently, he, it was more of a threat, I guess. But he was saying that more drastic uh, steps would have to be taken uh, if the numbers kept uh, increasing. Has the county had any input from uh, the governor's office as to what he's contemplating?
Um, we have, we have not. Short answer, no. We don't get a lot of, it's, it's not a direct line. He's got a lot of counties and areas to get feedback from, but our hunch is that the state would match something similar to what we put into effect last week, which is li- you know, prohibiting private gatherings. Uh, which are still allowed statewide up to fifteen people. Um, the county's prohibited those. Um, some more limited capacity at retail, and they may do something about dining at restaurants. But our hunch is that it would be similar to what we've already got in effect here.
So it might be a moot point in terms of our trying to get things overturned with the county, if the state then, if the governor then makes a statewide uh, mandate. Is that
Yeah.
accurate?
Yeah, that's accurate. And then honestly, my, if the governor is going to do something, my hope would be he'd do something statewide and then he would also still allow restaurants to operate in a statewide mandate. So where we could push that, it makes sense for us to be as closely aligned as possible with the state and maybe reopen dining. But um, that's, that's kind of what we're expecting, but you, you don't always know with the state.
And, and the sad part, I think that so much of this is, is contrary to what uh, Dr. Fauci recommends. And you know, when you talk about following the science, uh, he seems to be the reigning expert across the nation on all. And you know, when you talk about following the science, uh, he seems to be the reigning expert across the nation on all of this. And it seems to be that his advice is being largely ignored, at least in LA County. Which I think leads more to the frustration of all of this. But Corey, I, I do know that you, you have several meetings you're doing tonight. So why don't we see if the council has any other questions for you? And if not, we can let you move on to some other things. Any other?
I haven't answered any questions.
I did, I did have another one. You mentioned earlier because the numbers are going up considerably. That in terms of our hospitals being impacted at, right now, are, are we, are we impacted? Do we have capacity? Where, where are, where do we stand right now?
I mean, right at this very point, we have capacity. But this is all, you know, you're seeing way more cases now. Right now, we're seeing the hospitalizations from the cases we got three weeks ago. And three weeks ago, we were having about two, 3,000 cases per day. Now we're over four, 5,000 cases per day. So we're not at a point where we feel like the cases we have are going to lead to us needing to drastically increase our hospital capacity. Seventy-two percent of our cases this past week for people under the age of 50. We're hopeful that this was a lot of younger people that wanted to do something for Thanksgiving that just went and got tested anyway. And that's what led to the spike over the last week, not necessarily people that fill up our hospitals. But we've got to wait and see. But right now, we're not at a point where we need to, um, do any drastic surge or surging capacity of our hospitals. But we're wary. I mean, it could get there quickly. Things have increased quickly.
Um, I know that you, that was one of the questions. And I know that many cities have been bringing this up about the possibilities of the alternatives in terms of health departments. And I know that Anders, that you have been hearing from many cities. Did you have, before you leave, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, our analysis is that's a six to 12 month process to get into effect. So our, I mean, the supervisor always supports local control. She will always be a supporter of any city that wants to take more local control into their hands. She's been a big supporter of Pasadena and Long Beach's health departments on their own. It's a long process. So if it's being done just to impact this specific situation, it probably won't have that impact. I recommend, I've recommended any city to talk to the cities of Long Beach and Pasadena because as, as I talked to the city of Pasadena earlier today, they're like, yeah, I, I don't want to have to manage a vector control district anymore on my own. Cause that's what comes with having my own health department. There's a lot of other variables that come with it. Besides this anomaly year that we've had here. But if it's something the cities wants to pursue, the supervisor will absolutely support it. But do recommend reaching out to Long Beach, Pasadena to, you know, understand the full complexities of it. Because it's a, a big deal and probably won't have much of an impact on the orders that your city is under during this virus.
Thank you.
Uh, any other question for Anders relative to this item? Well, we certainly do appreciate you coming on tonight and sharing that information with us. We'll let you go on to one of your other many meetings for the evening. I'm, I'm sure this is keeping you all very busy, but we appreciate, um, your time very much.
Doctor, you closed all the restaurants and people aren't happy about it. But thank you all again for having me. Love the city of Monrovia. Supervisor always feels home there. So thank you all for welcoming me. Please reach out anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I think we have some, um, public comments that the city clerk has received about this item. Alice, if you could, uh, read those at this time?
Yes, um, I did receive several emails and some of them are, um, lengthier than others. So I will, um, try to move through them as quickly as I can, um, with doing them justice. First from Lauren Wake. My name is Lauren Wake and I've been a resident of Monrovia for the 31 years I've been alive. I have great concerns regarding the city's recent treatment of the COVID-19 pandemic and the proposal to remove our city from the umbrella of LA County Public Health Services. I hope that the city council will consider my thoughts in making their widely important decision that has wider implications than just the current crisis. I find it absolutely appalling that our mayor and city council continue to willfully ignore and rebut the county and statewide mask mandates and tell MPD not to enforce people wearing face coverings in public by saying, quote, "There is no city-wide mandate," unquote. One, why not? Why does the city of Monrovia think it knows more than LA County Public Health and California Public Health officials? Who have been researching this deadly disease for close to a year and have determined what is needed to keep our community safe? Two, why does the mayor and city council think that Monrovia is exempt from county and state level mandates? Our infection rate may currently be lower, but that does not mean that it won't go up. And it is almost certain to go up if we do not follow the widely accepted public health protocols, especially the simple ones of wearing masks. This inaction alone leads me to question, to ask the question, do our elected officials not fundamentally understand the levels of government? And how law, legislation, laws and legislation work? The actions taken and proposed by the mayor and city council create, at the very least, a feeling that they are cavalier with our community's health and safety. At worst, it indicates that they are wholly inadequate at governance and underqualified to be doing their jobs. As a young Monrobian who has lived here her entire life, this is disturbing and troubling on a deep level. I would ask that at the very least, the city begin enforcing mask mandates, but also additionally implore the city to not secede from the umbrella of LA County Health. Just because a few people don't agree with the restrictions imposed. I care about our small businesses as well, which is why I take out food from them regularly and tip generously. My health, my family's health and the health of this community matter more than people being able to eat at a restaurant for the next three weeks. Next from Catherine Gallagher. Esteemed fellow Monrovians, I'm all in favor of the letter that the town sent to the LA Public Health Department regarding restaurants. However, I'm not in favor of leaving their oversight and attempting to go it on our own. It is akin to a child who does not like parental rules, deciding to run away from home, only to realize ultimately that he or she must either return to the fold or face homelessness. We do not have the financial means or the clinical expertise to handle the current pandemic, vaccine distribution or other health and safety issues that are needed well beyond the pandemic. Clean spaces, healthy food and normal health inspections are necessary. And without this oversight, we will lose confidence in the very restaurants we are trying to protect. Yes, I feel the current rulings are a bit heavy-handed. I have felt comfortable eating at a few of our more careful restaurants where social distancing is enforced. Tables are far apart outdoors and waitstaff wear masks. On the other hand, our fellow citizens are a bit too cavalier and maybe our enforcement methods have been too relaxed. I have walked the streets on Friday night only to feel a bit uncomfortable with the maskless crowds who gather in the open areas. The areas in front of Iconix did not seem to fill guidelines of offering enough space for those to pass on the street. Let us spend our energy and our limited funds finding ways to help local businesses, including our restaurants. In a previous email, I suggested we, as a town, gather together to purchase large takeouts to deliver to agencies servicing those with food insecurity. Let us too walk the talk and enforce facial coverings and social distancing. This from Bonnie Newby. Thank you. Um, let's see, let me find the comments, sorry. City Council, please do the right thing and vote to allow restaurants to remain open for outdoor dining. This will affect many business owners who need to keep their businesses from closing and their employees who need to pay rent, keep food on the table for their families, et cetera. Monrovia is a great community. We have responsible citizens and we want to see it survive. Respectfully, the Newbies. This is from Angela Shaw. Good evening, Mayor Adams and Monrovia Council. I am writing this email in regards to the agenda item on alternatives to the LA County Public Health Department. The creation of Public Health Department or contracting services with another city that has a Public Health Department is an extremely large and costly task. There are several things that should be considered before facing, before tackling such a task. Fiscal impact to the city, the development of a Public Health Department would result in additional financial debt for the city. In an article written by the San Gabriel Valley Tribune in 2019, it noted the city of Monrovia was listed as one of the cities in California in bad financial shape for facing high-risk financial challenge due to debt burden, general fund reserves and pension obligations. In fact, Mayor Adams was quoted as saying that part of our debt was due to borrowing $51.7 million for the much-needed infrastructure improvements. Has this debt been resolved or do we still need to pay it back? How does the city propose to fund this proposal? Where would the revenue come from to fund such a project? Also, if the city were to contract with another city's Public Health Department and that city encounters budget cuts to their city department, who, whose would be cut first, that city or the contracted city? Two, LA County Public Health Previous Report Card. I'm not aware of any issues that the city has had with LA County Public Health Department before the pandemic occurred. My main concern is that this discussion for alternatives to the LA County Public Health Department is only coming into view because of one factor, a three-week restaurant closure due to the pandemic that was implemented by LA, LA's Public Health Department. The discussion of creating such a department or contracting with another city for these services should be based on more than just one particular reason. In addition to environmental health issues such as restaurant inspections, public health departments deal with other areas such as clinical services, immunizations, HIV, STD, family planning, public health laboratory, homeless services and many other areas. Has the city council done any research or studies that they can provide to the public on what development of a Public Health Department entails? Three, other needs for the city and its citizens. I do understand the need to support small businesses in the city. It's a very important issue. However, there are other issues that have plagued the city and its residents, residents before the pandemic, such as homelessness, crime, affordable housing. These items still need to be addressed for citizens that live in Monrovia. How will you propose to address these issues with focused funding and discussion of possible alternative to LA County Public Health Department now becoming the council focal point? Thank you for addressing my concerns. Let me wet my whistle. This comes from Melissa Taylor. Good evening, city council members, Mayor Adams and Mr. Feek. As we know, the spread of coronavirus is out of control. I understand people's COVID fatigue, but continuing to only educate the public doesn't seem to be the answer. It is irresponsible of government officials to continue to simply educate about wearing a mask and keeping distance without actually enforcing any of the statewide guidelines. Nothing is stopping people from gathering because they know there are no repercussions. We are beyond education. While Monrovia's deaths and coronavirus cases seem not that bad, the positivity rate in LA County is 5.5%. And we cannot think Monrovia is somehow beating the odds, even though we are doing the same things as everyone else. Of the 981 cases reported last week, how many have spread to others? How many deaths happened elsewhere not in Monrovia but came from Monrovia? How many gatherings have led to a positive test? How many passed a coworker whose death count doesn't factor into Monrovia's overall count? This is not a situation which we should stay the course. It's time for swift action. If we continue to only educate and tell people to wear a mask without actually doing anything, there won't be any hospital beds left. We are selfishly overworking our essential workers. It goes beyond mask-wearing. People need to stay home. Our leaders need to lead. I feel for our small businesses because it's not just our restaurants that are suffering, it is small shops as well. But we cannot ignore statewide mandates in order to make sure people eat at restaurants. Besides that, I've heard from waitstaff at restaurants who are fearful of coming to work and catching the virus from a customer. It is not just about the bottom line. It's also about caring for people in our community. It is also incredibly naive to think that a city of 40,000 people could successfully leave LA County Public Health Department in order to keep restaurants open. Where will we fund such an organization? A public health department is more than just keeping restaurants open. There are other areas to consider such as environmental, immunization and TB control, to name a few. It is also very costly. The city has not had to worry about public health issues. And once Monrovia has their own public health system, we are on our own and the long-lasting effects will be costly. This is a very reactionary response as opposed to being proactive. Simple truth is this, we don't get economic stability back until we get the virus under control. Leaving restaurants open doesn't get us there. That said, restaurant and business owners shouldn't have to fund the recovery. That is the job of the federal government. Our government officials at every level should be reaching out to work with our federal levers, leaders. I encourage you to work with our federal leaders to help us get on the right track. This one from Stephen Grolnick. Pasadena is open, why not Monrovia? Businesses in Monrovia are going broke. Do the right thing. Open up our city. Get out of LA County. And this next one's from Daphne Madison of House of Windsor. My name is Daphne Madison and I've been the proud owner of House of Windsor in downtown Monrovia for some 30 years. I write to you in hopes you'll consider my words in regards to closing down the restaurant outdoor dining in the city. I've watched over the past eight and a half months, businesses fails, fail and close. I've seen friends lose their life's work and some cases homes because of lack of being able to continue to pay their mortgage. We came to Monrovia many years ago when a lot of stores were boarded up. We were asked over and over why, why on earth did we pick Monrovia? The answer was simple. The city had a vision and they kept their word in creating that vision of a beautiful and unique downtown. I opened a tiny shop on corner of Myrtle Avenue and Lemons over many years ago. We've grown since then into the location we are now in. With 40, 4,000 square feet to serve the community with beautiful gifts and customer service. I, like many businesses, have watched our income go down and until finally half my staff has been laid off, my husband and I have not taken a paycheck out of the store since March in order to keep it afloat. A small business like ours relies on local restaurants for foot traffic. And now that has come to a complete standstill. On Black Friday, I watched as my staff, one by one was sent home and a dozen shoppers came into our store. ABC News came in to interview us to show how this shutdown has affected my store. What I told them, I will tell you in this email in hopes that you will realize the damage the city is doing by keeping restaurants closed. The restaurants in this town obviously have suffered when the mandate of hanging plastic tables, plastic between tables and passing traffic came a few weeks back. It was adhered to, even though financially it put another hardship to find that money. Now outside dining has been removed because some government official, who by the way, still gets their weekly paycheck, has deemed it's not safe to eat outdoors. I drive home each and every night. I see hundreds of cars in Walmart parking lot. I pass Home Depot again, probably 100 cars plus. I pass Target and Costco before I end up at my house in Euplind. Once again, 100 cars. None of this makes any sense to me. COVID doesn't get you there, but it gets you if you eat outdoors. I worked late last Friday night and I couldn't help but notice several hundred people flocking into the street fair that was held in Monrovia. There was a tamale vendor selling tamales out of his cooler. No one was stopping him or anyone else. And yet the city feels it's unsafe for restaurants with a handful of tables to be there. Restaurants that pay their city license and do so much more for the city than the vendors who come once a week for a few hours. I don't want the street fair to go away, but I want you to think about why they can be here, why hundreds of people can flock into other businesses, but you penalize restaurants that are here. None of that makes any sense. Please reconsider your judgment, um, with what has happened. I keep hearing about essential businesses versus non-essential. The firemen, the policemen and the medical worker, the market, while I can't help but think of the man who owns a little restaurant next door, has four small children to feed. I bet those children consider him essential to them. Bet his wife considers him essential to their family to pay rent. You see, it's wrong to deem a small business owner as non-essential or a waiter or a waitress as non-essential. Please think about these words. Business, like most things, has a trickle-down effect. I learned this years ago from Ronald Reagan. When those restaurants closed, they lost their income completely, but their expenses did not stop. They still have rent, food, utilities, et cetera. Now let's look at my business. I rely on foot traffic from those restaurants. My income has dropped so dramatically this last week that unless things change, I must close my store after 30 years. Monrovia will see what I saw 30 years ago when my friends said I was crazy to open a business here. We pay a hefty business license because of the amount of dollars we sell in our store each year. Monrovia will no longer receive that money. God knows what business will open in our place. Right now, anyone with common sense would not open a small business in this state. If I board up in January, property values in city Monrovia will start, start to drop. Not just because of me and my store, but because other businesses like restaurants will also board up. If anyone listening to this owns property in city or values the surrounding city, then they have to rethink this closure. Real estate agents will be affected and so forth and so on. The trickle-down economics. If it is in your power, I ask you to rethink this legislation. Look at the long-term effect it will have on the entire community. People will lose their life savings, their business, their homes. Monrovia will once again be deemed not so great, city to open a business in like it was many years ago. People who live in this city will see the value of their homes plummet. It just goes on and on. I've watched restaurants wear double masks, double gloves and do everything that is asked. And now that has all been taken away. If you think that they can reopen in mid-December, that won't happen. You not just take away their livelihoods, but you take away their innermost belief that America is a place where if you work hard, you can make a good living. You will crush these people. Please don't do this. I don't know who on the board determines this, or even know if you have the power to take back your little town. But if you do, for God's sake, please help us out. I want to be here in 2021, as do so many others. I've always described Monrovia as Mayberry. It's like going back in time. We have values. We care for one another. We work hard to make this a better town. Please work with us on this matter. Last but not least, from Maria Case. I'm concerned about the ban on outdoor dining in LA County. Shutting down restaurants for outdoor dining is detrimental to our local economy, is jeopardizing tax revenue and causing higher unemployment numbers in our area. Small businesses are suffering and may ultimately fail. So far, the LA County Health Department has been unable, unable to justify this ban on outdoor dining based on scientific data. The CDC study that was cited last week was nationwide study that did not distinguish between indoor and outdoor dining and did not include statistics that specifically pertained LA County. LA County is the only county in state of California to ban outdoor dining. Pasadena, which has its own health department and tracks its own data, has decided not to go along with the ban. Several cities in LA County, including Whittier, West Covina and Lancaster, join Monrovia in considering forming their own health department or forming one in conjunction with other cities. My question is, why has LA County made this decision and why so many cities are interested in forming their own health departments? Last week, Dr. Farrar cited a lack of resources in her department. This week, she expanded on her statement. She said that it's not outdoor dining that is the risk, it's restaurants that are not complying with the requirements. She said there are 31,000 restaurants in LA County. Her staff can get to 300 restaurants a day. If there are violations, the health department must go back to these restaurants. She said she does not have the staff to do this. This leads to be, leads to believe there might be a budget problem. Los Angeles County might be too large and too diverse to handle. Los Angeles County might be too large and too diverse to handle the needs of our citizens. I am an Arcadia resident, but I frequent dining establishments in Monrovia. I have many friends who own businesses and or have homes in Monrovia. Several months ago, I voted to raise the sales tax in Arcadia to prevent it from going to LA County as a whole. If an increase was voted, which is likely, Monrovia followed suit. I believe Monrovia residents would like to keep their money here. Would this extra money generated from sales tax be used to create a health department? Will it increase taxes for business owners and homeowners? How much will it cost? How long will it take to implement? What are the pros and cons? These are questions that I would like to have answered by the city council. And that concludes the comments received.
All right. Thank you so much. A couple of things I'd like to clarify. Number one, there is absolutely no proposal on the table for us to leave the LA County Health Department. So for all the folks who maybe thought that's what was going on, we're not. One writer wrote about us going it alone. There, I don't believe there's any appetite amongst the council for us to go it alone. So let's put that to rest. I think the concern, generally speaking, and again, we keep hearing about we need to follow the science. And we also heard this evening from one of the LA County Health Department employees that this change is basically coming on a whim. And the problem, I think, is that domestic violence is up considerably. Suicide is up considerably. Drug use is up considerably. Bankruptcies are up considerably. We're seeing people lose everything and it would be one thing to say, we're doing that because we've got the science to back it up, but we're doing this because we don't know what else to do. And that's kind of a sad reason to do it. But I think before we go any further, I would ask Mr. Steele to give us kind of a a legal update on our connection with the LA County Health Department and what would be required if, and again, there is no proposal to leave LA County, but we need to understand what would be required if we chose to. And this is just having a conversation. And I would hope that people at home would value their government having a conversation about what alternatives might be in place. But Mr. Steele?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you. In California, every city is required to designate a city health officer. And that's a requirement of the California Health and Safety Code. And one of the things that cities can do to designate a city health officer is designate the county health officer to serve as the city health officer. And that's because every county also has to have a health officer. And under the provisions of a resolution that the city council adopted quite some time ago, I mean, we're talking decades ago, and a chapter of the municipal code, the LA County Health Officer has been designated as the city's health officer. And the LA County Health Code is designated as the city's health code. So all of those restaurant letter grades you see in the windows, all of the regulation of food trucks, all of the regulation of certain types of water quality, trash enclosures, all of those things are all taken care of by the county health department as the city's health officer. And that, as I say, has been in place for many, many years. And the municipal code says that we, the city, will accept and allow to be enforced in the city of Monrovia, whatever orders the county health officer issues as well as the provisions of the LA County Health Code. Now, that's the same as 88 of the, I'm sorry, 86 of the 88 other cities in Los Angeles County do. There are only two that have designated their own city health officials, as you've heard, Pasadena and Long Beach. So Monrovia does what the vast majority of other cities in the county do. Under the provisions of the Health and Safety Code, once you designate a county health official as the city's health officer, then that designation holds for a year. You can't sort of pick and choose the times you want to have a city health officer and the times you want to appoint somebody else. You can't pick and choose which orders you want to comply with, which orders you don't want to comply with. Once you make the decision to go with the county health officer, that applies for at least a year and the orders of the county health officer are in effect in the city for at least a year. And so how does that play out practically here? And it was mentioned was made of it earlier. If, for example, and I'm emphasizing there is no proposal for this, as the mayor has said, just hypothetically, if the city said, we don't want the county health officer to be our health officer anymore. We want to go in a different direction. You could say that tonight and that wouldn't take effect until July 1 of next year. So it wouldn't have any impact at all on this outdoor dining issue and the order that's been issued by the county health officer or any of the other orders that the county health officer has issued, at least until July 1 of next year, by at which time we hope certainly the vaccinations are going to be going and we're a long way past this. So withdrawing from the county health officer is not a way to get out from under orders that we disagree with. There has been litigation filed against the outdoor dining order, the most recent one. A judge did not issue a temporary restraining order, but there still is a case pending. There's a lot of political activity. The city sent a letter opposing the order. A lot of cities have sent letters. A lot of private businesses have tried to bring political pressure to bear. And that's probably the most pragmatic way to try to influence this type of decision because, as I say, the city has made this decision to be within the county health officer authority and that's ineffective at least until July. Now, the one other thing I kind of want to correct that was said by some of the commenters, this is not the city's order. City council didn't vote on this order and I don't want to give the impression that the city council could take a vote to say this order doesn't apply in Monrovia. And the real danger of that is that people get a misimpression, right? Restaurant owners would get a misimpression that the city council could say, hey, you don't have to comply with this. The liability for not complying is on the restaurant owners, unfortunately, and the penalties would apply to the restaurant owners. So we want to emphasize that it wasn't the city council's decision to impose it. It's not a decision the city council can rescind and the city certainly encourages everybody to comply with the health officer orders because there are penalties for not complying. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for, go ahead, Becky?
When they, when the code says that you have to have a health officer, I tried to research this and I couldn't find it. Does the code also describe the base requirements or duties of this health officer?
The code doesn't, to my recollection, describe the base duties of a city health officer. The code refers back to the authorities of a county health officer. There's an entire chapter on what orders of the Health and Safety Code that provides what orders can be issued by the state health officer and what orders can be issued by a county health officer. And when there's a city health officer appointed, they have the authorities of a county health officer in that particular city. So there's not a, a chapter that says, here's what a city health officer does if that's...
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is because obviously the LA County Department of Public Health is huge and offers all sorts of services. And just for this conversation, if we were to have our own health department, would that mean that you'd have to have similar? I know in talking, I did have a conversation with the mayor-elect Victor Gordo from the city of Pasadena and he indicated that city of Pasadena's health department doesn't do all the same things that LA County does. But he did make an interesting comment that he said he's very proud of the city's health department, that they do not use any general funds, which led me to another question of how exactly is LA County Department of Public Health funded? What does or what do the citizens of Monrovia pay for LA County services? How does that get taken care of?
I can't give you percentages. I will just tell you that a huge portion of what the Department of Public Health does in the county structure is discretionary, right? It's not, it's not legally mandated. So there are legally mandated things they have to do that are funded by fees and, you know, other sources of revenue. And then they have a huge portion of the agency that deals with discretionary activities that even the board supervisors decides they want done or the state legislature creates a program and offers grant funding that's been administered by county departments of health. So, you know, I have no idea what the budget of the department is. I just know that there are huge portions of it that are not mandatory. And so in a city like Long Beach or a city like Pasadena, what you have generally is a, and I have some experience with Pasadena, you have a more essential focus and a scaled back focus than the huge discretionary outcome oriented focus that the LA County Department has, just simply because there's so much more revenue available to a county. But Pasadena carries out those essential mandated functions.
I'm just seeing some various comments as if, if we, if that was an option for us to leave, to go to another, to have our own health department, that we would save the money that we would be paying to LA County. Now, does the city of Monrovia pay LA County anything for the health department services?
Well, there are fees that are paid by customers.
Customers, but not, not the, I'm the city specifically.
I'd leave that to Dylan. I don't know the answer to that question.
Again, with just a very limited amount of time to review the budget, I just went on the county's budget update website. They've got a five-volume budget with, you know, several hundred pages each volume. But from what I could understand, the health department is about a $1.1 to $1.2 billion dollar expense for the county. About $220 million comes from property tax revenue that the county provides supplementary to the federal, state, and fee-based revenues that they otherwise receive. So quite a considerable amount of money and arguably, you know, Monrovians contribute to that amount. That's that kind of that local amount. But they, majority of their funds do come through state and federal assistance.
I did, as there have been comments made too, in talking to mayor-elect Victor Gordo, he said that anyone that would want to talk about the pros and cons of a health department, that he would be glad to facilitate a conversation regarding that. But they are not contemplating allowing more people to become a part of the health department, their health department umbrella, but would be glad to discuss the pros and cons. The San Diego Valley Cog is getting a lot of, in their regional body, obviously, a lot of questions and inquiries. And I asked that this be put on our executive board agenda for next Monday to discuss if that's even a conversation we want to have regionally or within the cog of how cities may want to consider that. But again, it's only a conversation, but it obviously is very, very, very complicated and costly.
Well, and again, before anyone run off and get on Facebook and say that the Monrovia city council's proposing to leave the LA County Health Department, nothing could be further from the truth. But we've had so many complaints about this. I felt that it was worthy of a conversation and if for nothing else, so that we all know how it all works. But I do know that there's a lot of frustration that LA County is not following the science. And we've all heard, especially at the federal level, how important it is to follow the science. And it's really sad. And I equate this to, can you imagine if the highway patrol said, we've got too many car accidents, we're going to close all the freeways? We couldn't conceive of that happening, but hopefully as we move forward and Becky, if you'll keep us updated on what's going on at the cog about this. I can't imagine at any level that the city of Monrovia would have its own health department. So if anybody is down typing on their social media that that's the proposal, it's just not. Not going to do that.
Tom, I know that another conversation that's been coming up lately or it's been revived, it's not a new conversation. It's the breaking up of LA County because the LA County in and of itself is just too huge. One of the items that is going to be discussed at our homeless committee meeting tomorrow is a white paper on our involvement with LASA, the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. And one of the items is the solutions or possible solutions is to provide more autonomy to the cities that avail themselves of the services because LASA is just huge. And the response sometime, many times is just, it's just, it's not, it doesn't do the job, let's put it that way. It's inadequate, it's inadequate. And so we're discussing that tomorrow and that ultimately will come to the governing board. So I'll be bringing it back to the council for discussion. But that's a huge county department, not as big as the health department, but a huge county department that the cities just, they're not listening to the communications for so on and so forth. So, and in terms, it's not just the outdoor dining. I mean, all along, the orders seem to be inconsistent and my, my most favorite one is for the gyms. They could, they can't have, they can have outdoor gyms and you can exercise in the outdoors, out in the parking lots most of the time, but you cannot avail yourselves, you cannot use their indoor restrooms, but they'll let you have a porta potty. Now, how that makes any sense, I have, I have no idea.
We have a over $1 billion a year department running on a whim.
And, and so, and...
If you think that's not true, all you have to do is go back to just before Mother's Day, you could go to Home Depot and buy flowers, but you couldn't go to a florist and buy flowers.
Right. And that's, and when Daphne says, and for many people, it's really hard to watch how many thousands of people go into a Walmart or Costco or Target or whatever, but small businesses haven't been able to have that same, same advantage. So very inconsistent.
Are there any questions for Craig or Dylan on this subject?
I would like to know, it'd be very interesting to know. I mean, obviously, we're still going to be a part of the health department. How exactly do, are they funded with our taxpayer dollars or how that actually works? It's really hard, it's really hard to research.
Well, I would think that since a large portion of this comes from property taxes, it shouldn't be too difficult to look at the assessed value... To look at at the assessed value of Monrovia. And how much of every property tax dollar goes to the health department? And do some quick math and and see what Monrovia contributes.
It's to the health department.
The health department, so that they can control things on a whim, rather than controlling things based on science. And and if you think that that's not true, all you have to do is is ask yourself, why was it okay to go to Home Depot and buy flowers? But it wasn't okay to go to a florist and buy flowers? And these decisions are not being made on science. Anyways, any other questions on this item? Becky, keep us informed and we'll move forward. Thank you. Thank you, Craig. Appreciate your input. Okay, we'll now move on to administrative reports. A R one is uh a request for us to join the California. Community Housing Agency, and Dylan, you're up.
All right, thanks, Tom. Um, and I appreciate, uh, I believe, uh, joining us, listening in. Allison Arnold and Jordan Moss with Catalyst Housing Group, very appreciative of their time. And willingness to listen through, I'm not sure how long they've been in the waiting room, but they're here connecting now. I'll still do the presentation. So really defer to them for any uh Q and A at the very end. Um, and I'll try and move through this briefly, council, just for the listening public. Um, part one of the duties of being a council member is. Some nights meetings start at five o'clock, and so tonight we've been going at it multiple public meetings. Uh, since five o'clock, and so we're in our, you know, sixth hour, well into the sixth hour. I appreciate your time. In the past few years, Monrovia, we've been working very hard to try and build housing within the city of Monrovia. Um, most specifically, uh, market rate housing in the Station Square area. But also a variety of housing in in other parts of town, everything from duplexes. Town homes, even single family residential, and like tonight, you know, even seeing historical. Uh, housing projects. I I I'm very impressed with the quality, quantity, and just the breadth of housing. Uh, options that we see here in Monrovia. So I think that's it's something worth commending the council on. Uh, but specifically, as of late, we've been talking about how to build more affordable housing, and as council well knows. We've been working through collaborative partnerships with developers to include affordable housing in projects. Um, and at the estimated cost of about four hundred thousand dollars per unit. The approximately fifty-five housing, affordable housing units that the city has been able to see entitled. Um, represent a twenty-two million dollar investment from our developers in town, which are funds that the city of Monrovia does not have to expend. Um, and particularly when the state removed our redevelopment agencies, it removed a very useful tool. For us to build affordable housing. So really what's before you tonight is a somewhat newer tool available to cities across the state of California. Several months ago, we were approached by a group called Catalyst Housing Group for an opportunity to address affordable housing, which is specifically low and very low. Housing, but also include what we call a missing middle. This is more of a moderate housing income type. Um, that that would be people earning somewhere between sixty and up to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. Within the staff report, um, up to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income represents. About ninety-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for a family of four living in Los Angeles County. Within your staff report on the city website. Is an, as a newer matrix that we created, so that people could see uh where affordability lies in this matrix relative to family size. And the level of affordability from extremely low all the way up to moderate income. The new tool that was created by the California Legislature uh is a allows cities to enter into a J P A, Joint Powers Authority. Uh, and uh, which which are political subdivisions of the state. Um, this Cal C H A, the California. Housing Authority is founded with the specific purpose of providing, preserving, protecting, and supporting middle income housing production throughout the state. Upon necessary local approvals, Cal C H A issues government purpose revenue bonds to finance acquisition. Uh, or development of rent restricted. Uh, rental communities for households earning sixty up to one hundred percent of the area median income. Through providing these below market rents and capping annual increases, Cal C H A creates immediate benefits for. California's middle income workforce who may not qualify for traditional affordable rental housing programs. Yet are increasingly priced out of communities where they work. Through this kind of, I'll call it, middle income housing model, Cal C H A acquires existing market rate apartment communities. With the issuance and sale of its own government purpose bonds. As a governmental entity, Cal C H A has granted a one hundred percent property tax exemption for each property it acquires. Complexes or the the housing units are then converted to rent restricted units. For low income, median income, and moderate income households, earning no more than a hundred and twenty percent of the A M I. Under the program. No existing tenants are displaced. Rents on affordable units created through the program are capped at a maximum of thirty-five percent. Of the applicable percentage of the area median income. And rent increase percentages are also capped at a maximum of four percent annually. Which is well below the limits allowed with Assembly Bill fourteen eighty-two. All new tenants will need to qualify based on income. The city would not be a direct party to any real estate transaction or financial transaction. This is all done through the J P A, and it's currently eleven members. The bonds issued by Cal C H A for project are payable solely out of revenues and receipts derived from the project. Being financed and are never obligations of the city. Um, as part of the uh, the approach, uh, the Cal C H A also uses a no liability letter, which is included as attachment A of your uh. Council report. But just to clarify that bonds that are issued for the purchase and acquisition. Uh, or refurbishment of these these units are not bonds issued by the city. They're not debts or obligations by the city. For the program to work in in any community, so specifically here in Monrovia, the city would first need to become an additional member of Cal C H A. Before a property is acquired under the program, the city would need to sign what's called a purchase option agreement. For the specific property, which allows, but does not obligate the city at its sole discretion. To purchase the property between year fifteen and year thirty of the bonds. To maintain housing affordability beyond thirty years, the most likely outcome would be for the city to assign its purchase option to a nonprofit housing corporation. Additionally, the city would receive any surplus cash flow from a property during the life of any bonds issued. If the city elects not to exercise a purchase option, Cal C H A maintains the right to sell the property after a year thirty. At which time all net proceeds would be granted to the city. And the city has the option of directing any revenues it may receive from the program to be used for affordable housing, or the city could opt to keep the revenue. It's the city's discretion. Although at this current time, it is unknown how many of any properties would be acquired through the program. Joining the J P A would certainly provide the possibility of increased affordable housing opportunities to the city. Uh, that is not dependent on a local subsidy, meaning a city subsidy. Um, it would provide rental housing affordable to middle income renters and even low, very low income renters. Who often don't have access to rent regulated affordable housing. Uh, let's see. To date, Cal C H A has added the cities of Fairfield, Glendale. Including the Glendale Housing Authority, Hayward, Larkspur, Livermore, Marin County, Menlo Park, Mountain View. Napa, Santa Rosa, and Walnut Creek, all as members. Since the inception in two thousand, in January two thousand nineteen, they've acquired four properties. Um, and actually working to close on a fifth property. Uh, to the tune of five hundred and fifty million dollars in acquisitions of real estate for affordable housing in California. As we look through environmental impacts and fiscal impacts, there are no environmental impacts related to this item before you tonight. Uh, there is no financial impact tonight. There's no liability or obligation created by becoming a member of the J P A. Um, I would point out that if at any point in time the city wanted to exercise a purchase option agreement. There could be a financial impact, and that would never happen until at least year fifteen of the agreement. And that would always remain at the city's sole discretion if you wanted to exercise that option. And a draft uh purchase option agreement has been included in your uh staff report just for uh for your review. So with that, uh, that's the presentation before you tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions myself. Also, be happy to. Defer to Allison or Jordan who are listening in on the call. Um, I think that this was a fairly creative approach to looking at how we do affordable housing in Monrovia. Um, and I thought it was certainly worth bringing to council's attention for your consideration. And that's my report. Thank you.
Good report, Dylan. Thank you. Any questions for Dylan?
Um, so it obviously it the. The use of the term J P A and we have currently our San Gabriel Valley Housing Trust. Which is different, and that did require a membership fee. Um, the the trust doesn't purchase bonds or finance anything through through bonds. I'm a little curious, so on this one, there is no, there's no membership fee for um. Being a member of of the uh J P A, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm just curious if there's no fee, why, what, there's gotta be a catch somewhere. I I'm just not. It sounds almost too good to be true.
I think with, similar with any acquisition, if the city, if the s- city basically authorizes the J P A to issue bonds. Typically, you're going to have costs related with the issuance of bonds that are part of the. Um, the bond issuance itself. So there's gonna be. Legal fees, there's gonna be bond issuance costs, there's gonna be annual reporting costs. And those, those are all usually included as part of the overall bond issuance, which would be issued by uh the the J P A. So the costs associated with it would be borne by the J P A, and they'd all be done through debt instruments uh issued by the J P A. But as far as like an annual uh uh participation fee, program fee, there's none. The the reason that the um, the cog re- regional housing trust established a fee was because there were certain. Ongoing operational costs that several of us members early on wanted to make sure that we were covered, so we had that as a tool. For the long term and achieving regional, you know, housing goals. And so each city agreed to a uh, to a fee schedule.
So on that, but but the the bond program, the city doesn't actually. It, are they out of the pocket then for the those costs? It, I think in your presentation, it said that the. Um, the J P A then takes care of all the the debt service on that.
Yes, correct.
The liabilities are all the liabilities of the J P A. The the only reason the J P A exists is because. Um, a government entity was needed to to be the entity that issues these bonds.
Bonds.
And and the J P A protects, under California law, the J P A protects the members of the J P A from liability. So it's a way to get government agencies together to create a financing mechanism that's allowed by. Both state and federal law, but protect the cities. The cities wouldn't join it if if there was gonna be.
I I guess maybe a better question is, why wouldn't you want to be a part of this J P A? What what is the down, what's the the downside of being a part of the J P A?
Well, I can think, uh, and and Dylan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I I think you said that these properties. Um, come off the tax rolls when they're acquired.
One, yeah.
So, eh, although it sounds like we're not into it for any money, we lose revenue. Um, from day one, as soon as they come off the the tax rolls.
And that would be for, that would be for the the life of the bond or?
For as long as they own it.
Oh, for as long as they own it.
In the, in the state of California, to build, to help. Complete the construction of affordable housing, if if units are built and they're currently assessed at, you know, uh, let's call it a uh, a. Regular assessment, they're able to qualify for what's called a welfare exemption, which provides them property tax. Uh, relief and exemptions for building affordable housing. Um, in, you know, the in the deliberations and discussions I've had with Catalyst Housing have been very clear that the city of Monrovia. Has looked very specifically at our at our housing goals and made sure that new housing construction pays for itself. That those costs of new housing, including water impacts, road impacts, we have all various impact fees. Those are borne by the new development and not existing property owners. Um, what what I'm hopeful to see is that Catalyst Housing can look at properties that are, they they talk about existing housing. Um, perhaps housing that is part of former redevelopment where the city does not receive. Uh, any uh property tax payments currently, or a very nominal amount at that. Uh, and are able to repurpose those kinds of properties for affordable housing, where the net effect on the city is zero. Um, I will certainly be, you know, working with Craig's office, with the city council, and we'll make very sure. That the city's not, you know, suffering a a significant loss. Um, when we are converting these properties, or at least we understand what we're giving up. If we agree to a particular um property, as as the agreement works. The city must enter into and agree to these purchase option agreements on particular properties. Before they can go to the J P A. And so we'll wanna make sure every time a project is in front of us. Uh, i- if this is a common occurrence, or if it's just a one time for one project. I will wanna be very clear about the financial implications and impacts to Monrovia. Um, but I do think there are properties which were part of redevelopment. Um, this provides a a great opportunity to repurpose them as affordable. Um, which would not uh impact the city considerably. Also, special assessments are done differently, where, you know, things like our library bonds, our hillside. Uh, preserve bonds, those all continue to be collected anyway. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't be impacted that way, but Tom brings up a good point. That's one very important reason why. Some cities do not uh participate in building affordable housing.
And I'm sorry, I'm, I don't have the report in front of me. When did this J P A, when was it formed?
Was formed in uh, uh, January nineteen, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so it it hasn't, it hasn't actually, um. Has it actually issued bonds on for other purchases yet?
Yes, they have five.
But I'm sorry, you said, it's late. I'm sorry. Yes, you did mention that.
We don't have any former redevelopment projects that were designed, built, and sold as rental property, to my knowledge. Um, but let's say Catalyst goes down and picks up a fifty unit apartment building down on Doherty Road. And they buy that for fifteen million dollars. Um, that fifteen million dollars worth of ta- property tax revenue, if I understand you correctly. Whatever our portion of that would be, we would no longer receive?
Um, cor- correct. If they qualify, so if they went and purchased a property and it was not. Currently receiving any kind of exemption, uh, you know, and you look at a, you know, a new market rate, the purchase price. And then you apply, you know, Prop thirteen and and where their new assessed valuation number will be. You know, the city's portion represents, you know, whatever percentage. So how- however you whittle down the numbers. Um, let's just say it's a fifty million dollar purchase, you know, one percent is. Uh, a hundred and fifty thousand, correct? The city's portion would be approximately twenty percent for back and napkin math. So we'd be looking at about a thirty thousand dollar impact. So for the city, and and again, these are rough numbers, um. I think that's, that's where the city council could decide what's the value of adding the affordable housing units, because in some cases. You know, if the city has to subsidize to the tune of about four hundred thousand dollars per unit. Versus provide a, uh, you know, some kind of, you know, approval through a unique program. Where the net impact to the city is maybe fifteen thousand dollars, you know, whatever it is. I think that's where the city, that's that's the kind of financial decision making we'd wanna be bringing to council to let you decide if you'd like to proceed.
Um, I just have one other question, actually I have more, but this one question. You mentioned middle income. But then are the units targeted for low to moderate income? I I'm, I. I don't understand the correlation there, because you. You mentioned the middle income, but then later on you talked about providing opportunities for low. Um, low income renters.
Catalyst has been very um upfront about their, they want to work with cities on what our housing goals are. So for example, you all know we have arena allocations. And we, you know, we have done very well in certain income levels. But but in other areas, like very low and low income housing, you know, we still have, you know, arena allocation. But, but in other areas like very low and low income housing, you know, we still have, you know, RENA allocations we need to meet. So they've left the door open intentionally so that they could work directly with cities. Tell us where you want them. And typically what they, what they start out with is a blend of about a third, a third, a third of very low, low and that, you know, call it that middle income tier, that above tier. Part of the reason they include that in the housing projects that they do are, you know, one, little bit more income and rent here helps support the lower income, the lower rents received, you know, for very low. But also there's, there's no real financing option right now for this middle income rent. If, if someone is a very low income and they get a pay raise or they work a second job, and now they earn a little bit more money, technically they would no longer qualify based on income. So by providing a, a middle income tier, it gives people another level to move up to where they can remain in their property.
But you also said that people, existing renters would not be displaced. And so they, maybe those would be higher income renters as well.
I, I think the, yeah, the focus when they transition is existing renters don't get displaced. I think when they look at qualifying future renters, future folks living in these units, then they, they income qualify. So if you're in, they're going to allow the transition period to be in. But then when you, you know, when their income qualifying down the road, you can qualify.
Well, I do know the, the, the part of this that it's not at all exciting to me is the prospect of the city of Monrovia acquiring the property 15 years down the road. Monrovia is not unique in that most cities do not make good landlords. It's just not what government does. And I, I think government needs to focus on what government does and let everybody else focus on the other stuff. And we've just gone through a long period of time in seeing how Monrovia did not take care of the maintenance around some properties that we owned. And so I would, I would be very reluctant to see us acquire anything down the road. But I think, I think this is a, a noble.
I'm frozen, but if we, um.
We can still hear you.
You need some hot water?
Oh, good. As long as you can hear me, I won't worry about it. I'm just not moving. Okay.
We can hear you.
We can, we can definitely hear you. I think what I.
Also go back to the, to the mid seventies when we had the Chestnut Apartments. A rundown place got, and that was all affordable housing. I mean, hypothetically, if the, if they were to purchase a, an apartment complex, I mean, then you want to know who's going to maintain the maintenance on it. I mean, who do you go to when there's a problem that's, you know, going on down there? What about the PD? That's going to have to be, you know, I'm just saying, I'm just throwing things out there. Plus the losing of the, you know, the tax dollars on the property tax.
So I think, number one, it's a noble idea to create affordable housing. I think we can all say that that is a good thing to do.
Right.
But I think before we would move forward on this, I would be more comfortable if we found out some more of the numbers involved. But I'm also a little hesitant to, to get on board with something that's this new because we don't know how well they manage things. They've made four acquisitions in a year and a half and, you know, everything sounds peaches and cream going into things. And sometimes it doesn't end up that way. But I think maybe if we could schedule perhaps a study session to go over some of the numbers on this, I'm not sure that everything we've heard is how it will end up being.
And it, and it's late.
Also Mayor Adams, I'm sorry, I turned off my video. But I just want to remind before we get off the, off the item that we did have one letter.
Oh, okay. Please read that.
Dear Monrovia City Council, thank you, council and city staff for all your work during these COVID-19 times. Monrovia Housing and Tenants Advocates submits this letter in reference to Agenda Item AR1. I'm going to leave out the title. We agree that rental housing for middle income earners is essential and support this item. We hope that by becoming a member of CalCHA, Monrovia residents will see local realistic housing results. Housing for all income earners contributes to a diversity of community that benefits everyone. But we ask that you also keep housing production and protection in mind for low and very low income residents and future residents of Monrovia. Many key workers in our local businesses, institutions, and nonprofits fall into the low and very low income brackets. They need housing and have a right to their community. And in the case of protecting affordable housing stock, residents have a right to stay in the communities they helped build. As we leave 2020, the economic fallout of the global pandemic will have long lasting consequences. We knew the housing crisis was hit, has hit everyone hard, but it falls disproportionately hard on low income workers. These workers are our school workers, healthcare workers, retail workers, restaurant workers, people who make Monrovia what it is. But Monrovia needs to make better strides towards production of housing stock for these Monrovians. This includes stricter and greater inclusionary demands for new projects. But we also hope that membership in groups similar to CalCHA, community input on the upcoming housing element, and openness to creative funding ideas result in the production of more rental housing for low and very low income earners and residents of Monrovia. Again, MHTA thanks council and city staff for their work on housing in Monrovia. And we look forward to working collaboratively with the city on the upcoming housing element and other housing issues. Sincerely, Monrovia Housing and Tenants Advocates.
Alice, is, is that letter signed by anybody?
Um, gosh, it, it was sent by an individual whose name I can't recall. Let me actually, I can get it.
I was just curious because, you know, normally when we get a letter from an organization.
Yeah, sorry, it was sent on by Allison Henry, who I believe is one of the members of the Monrovia Housing Advocates.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I, I think I, I would feel more comfortable if we table this for now and spend a little more time discussing it and looking at the numbers.
Yeah, I agree with the mayor on that.
Yeah.
I, and the positive side, there are so many problems inherent in federal funding, that least of which is if you get a raise, you can get evicted. So this has some interesting possibilities, but I, I agree. You know, when it seems too good to be true, it means we need to have a study session.
Any objection? Okay, Dylan, there you have it. And we thank the.
Could I, could I just say, and Dylan, thanks for bringing us this. I'm, I'm really appreciative of your noticing as city manager that this is a deficit in our housing stock and looking far and wide to find ways that we can fill that need. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, we will do that. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is, I believe, December 15th at this time. And unfortunately this evening, Monrovia has lost another person. And we will be adjourning this meeting in memory of Angel Duran, father of Public Works Service Administrative Assistant, Julia Benavides. So if you would keep their family and your thoughts and prayers, I know they'll be very appreciative. Losing family members around the holidays is always harder than the rest of the year. I know I lost my father on December 30th, and that date sticks in my mind unbelievably so. So keep, keep Mr. Duran's family and your thoughts and prayers. And we will look forward to seeing you all December 15th. Thank you so much.
Night.